Okay, I call to, I call to order the June 10th, 2020 business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your phone and electronic devices. Due to the current climate across the nation, the board asks that in lieu of the Pledge of Allegiance, you share a moment of silence for reflection and healing of our nation. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call roll. We can't hear you. We're not, we are unable to get Ms. Wagner on. It doesn't look like she's muted. I'm not sure what's happening. No. Is there, is Jeremy online? Can Jeremy switch you in?
Carolyn, I am here. I'm trying to get ahold of Jen now.
Okay, is, is it possible, we can wait a minute, but is it possible that we can do, well, I don't know, I was thinking of treasure program just to get the roll call, or we have to wait?
You could probably do it.
Yeah, the president can call it.
Okay, all right. So I'll go ahead and call the roll. I don't know if I'll do it alphabetically, but here we go. Ms. Bates? Ms. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Murawski?
Here.
And Carolyn Jones, and I'm here as well. Did I get everybody? Okay, thank you. All right. I need a motion to revise the agenda to remove the 90-day appropriations presentation, which will be presented later this month. The date's got a little confusing, so we need to remove that. Is there a second? Ms. Bolton, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call the roll again. Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Ms. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
And Carolyn Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries? Okay, so now I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, June 1st, 2020, and the business meeting, June 1st, 2020. I need a motion.
Make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Bates, thanks. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion carries. The minutes are approved as presented. Okay, Mr. Murawski, as Chair of the Policy Committee, please present the June 5th Committee Meeting Report.
Sure, thank you so much. At the June 5th Policy Committee Meeting, we were presented a few policies that needed to be shored up in light of COVID-19. There was nothing dramatic added to the policies. It was a lot of language surrounding new federal guidelines, state guidelines regarding graduation requirements and things that have been changed. We did tee up. The second part of the meeting was teeing up conversations for the future about perhaps more substantive policy changes that may be required, but at which time we're not prepared to have the conversation because we haven't firmly decided what school will look like in the fall, which we will hear some options later tonight, actually. And those are items like regarding transportation, et cetera. So it was just sort of cleaning up and clearing up policies that needed amending. And I can go pull those up if you have any questions about them. But that's, yeah, that's pretty much the end of the report for me. We will find out later in the superintendent's presentation, or her performance leadership team's presentation, rather, some other policies perhaps for consideration. So at this time, the Policy Committee, while we are not dormant and we are meeting and we are working, a large part of our work is going through our large amount of policies, quite frankly. We've already begun an audit a couple of years ago under Ms. Bates' leadership when she was Chair. So we've been going through the policies and cleaning them up the past three years anyway. And now that process is sort of on pause for the time being while we look at our policies with this COVID lens.
Okay, thank you. Do board members have questions or comments about the Policy Committee Report? Okay, thank you. So we'll, I'm sorry, Ms. Bolton.
Okay, thanks. So we're not voting on the first group until the 22nd, correct?
Mr. Murawski?
The first group?
Policy change.
Of policies?
Correct, yes, that's right, that's right.
And then the, on the second group, I appreciate that being separate because those, as you said, are very substantive. I do have a question about, just in future reference when I'm thinking about this, the 2340, which is the field and other district-sponsored trips. It talks about all out-of-state travel for students and staff temporarily suspended.
Yeah.
Is that staff accompanying students, or is that also staff by themselves as well?
I'll ask for the superintendent to confirm this, but staff as well.
That is correct. The staff attending professional development out of state, we're recommending that we suspend that for a year.
Okay, and I think that makes perfect sense. Just wondering if that's able to be done contractually. And just, that's for a future reference. Nobody needs to answer it now. Because there are some things that are related to the actual union folks going to union business and whatever. So that's just an early question of big stuff. And obviously, the transportation is the most, the largest issue there. So thank you for separating those between kind of perfunctory and substantive. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Hoing did a great job separating that out for us. And of course, one of the other, I should have said, is an update. Mr. Hoing has a new Assistant General Counsel. Stephanie, someone help me, I'm brain farting so bad with her last name. Oh, but she's great, and we're happy that she's here.
Stephanie Scott.
Stephanie Scott, thank you. Ms. Scott got to present her first couple of policies. And as Ms. Bolton knows, we always like to tease our good friend, Mr. Hoing, that having an assistant counsel is helpful. And we had a really good meeting, I think, Ms. Bowers would attest to. And it was great to have Ms. Scott on the team. So welcome Stephanie Scott to the CPS family. She comes to us from Dinsmore. We're very happy to have her.
General Counsel really needed her.
Okay, okay, so let's move on. So point well taken, Ms. Bolton, that is something to consider. Appreciate you bringing that up. Okay, Ms. Bates, please present the ad hoc committee report.
Yes, you have a copy of the minutes of the ad hoc committee. And Ms. Bowers and I met virtually. And we believe that we have completed the work, have accepted all of the edits that were offered, with the exception of moving the student, of keeping the Student Code of Conduct with student achievement. We believe that it should be the health and safety to align with the strategic plan, because virtually all of the elements of the Student Code of Conduct are under the health and safety area of the strategic. So with that exception, we accepted the edits. We will certainly, you know, have the discussion. We can do that at the time of the resolution, but we wanted to bring the resolution forward this evening to get the bylaws taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments, Ms. Bolton?
So when we accept these minutes, and we really appreciate all that you all have done, I know that I do anyway, for sure, that's when we'll discuss whatever issues might still be out there, or any questions we have. So when we accept this, the minutes, it's not necessarily accepting all of the edits, or what, that, that will be when we discuss, discuss the resolution.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we're passing the resolution to file the minutes as written. And yes, we can have further questions. I too have further questions, and I was going to reserve that as well for the resolution discussion. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Bates, on that report?
That is, that is the report.
That is it. Okay, thank you. All right. So I need a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I make the motion to approve the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Murawski, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, minutes are approved as written. Thank you. Does anyone have any kudos? Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I was speaking to a friend and former colleague who shared with me how clear and compelling and helpful the COVID pop-up is on the CPS website. And I was going to ask our superintendent, I'm not sure who wrote that, but she, this friend shared with me that she thought it was values-driven, clear, helpful, proactive, and just very well-done. And so I wanted to make sure I pass that along. I actually couldn't tell her who wrote it. Do you know who that, where that came from?
I would probably tend to think it's either Dawn Grady or Krista Boyle. Krista, can you help me on that?
Sure. If it's a letter to the community, yes, it was a team effort.
Team, hold on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kudos to the team. All right. Any other kudos, Mr. Murawski?
Yeah, big kudos to the young people that had that really courageous, insightful, inspiring conversation about race and other items led by Ko here, when was I guess, last week? Time is starting to be relevant again to me. I think it was last week. It's only 40 minutes long, and it's on our website on the front page. And for the massive amount of people watching, first of all, thanks for tuning in. But second of all, take 40 minutes and watch it. It's really, it was really powerful. And it was student-led, and the conversations are going to continue. So kudos to superintendent and her team, and everyone who sort of said, you know, we're going to do this. But then especially to the kids who led it, made it happen.
Right. I read, I saw it too. It was great. Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Bowers?
Yeah, and I just want to add to Mike. I saw the platform and the video. And I want to give kudos to the district for strategically picking leaders from schools other than our magnet high schools. I thought it was important and that we identified the leaders in our schools that are not often identified and in the public eye are made relevant. But I wanted to commend the team for their intentional selection from West High and with those students at a great job. Congratulations on that.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's move on. Ms. Bates, do we have any retirements?
Yes, we do. We have several retirements from our certificated employees. We have Linda Johnson, teacher from Woodward, Mary Lenning, a teacher from SCPA, and Caroline N. N. Dulu, a teacher from Chase. And from our civil service sector, we have Roberta Rice, who is also retiring. So we want to thank these professionals for their service and wish them well in this new chapter of their lives.
Okay, congratulations to the retirees. Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, so we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here are the specific instructions for participation, participation in hearing of the public. To speak, you will need to send a request by clicking on the hand icon on your screen. Mac and iPad users are able to access the raised hand icon located on your device. Once the request has been granted by Treasurer Wagner, you will receive a notice on your screen. Click yes to go interactive. If you do not want your video active, please disable the video camera icon. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. We have a record audience today of 285 attendees. So we're going to open it up for hearing of the public. Ms. Wagner, do we have any requests?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Oh, good. Sorry about that. I think the weather locked me off the network. Yes, Mr. Ozzy Davis should be online.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Hello, we can.
Awesome, 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 awesome. I'm calling you from a bed, I'm calling you from a bed at Jewish hospital. I'm just getting discharged. I wanted to say, you are, you have been, you've been in that journey with me the whole time, so I wanted to report it out to the team. I wanted to say, I'm on a mission with several others to help redefine what education, what education looks like. And I heard from one of the administrators last week, and I want to continue to, I want to continue to show gratitude and appreciation for the flexibility of our administrators and our staff. One of those kids last week that was on the call was my nephew, Aaron Davis, from what was most likely going to be their valedictorian. And he was so appreciative of an opportunity to share his voice. And for the rest of that day, all we could talk about was uncertainty, because that was what was on his, was on his soul, uncertainty. And a lot of these kids are just like a lot of us adults, where it's so uncertain that we don't know what's next. And that's why I think it's a prime time to reimagine what an education system looks like. And I want to thank the district for hearing that. And we're going to keep bringing things to you now that I'm out the hospital, or I'm actually waiting on a wheelchair to get pushed downstairs. But we're going to definitely be bringing things to you, where we see some social justice curriculum that could, that could apply. We see some teaching tolerance information that could apply. And I really want to, I really want to see the wholeness of the board work, work on some of these things, so we can reimagine a system for our kids that's much more authentic than the one we have now. And thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll talk to you guys later on.
Thank you. Take care, Mr. Davis.
Peace.
Ms. Wagner?
Nobody else yet?
Okay, we'll give it a minute or two. I have a feeling people are waiting on the next agenda item. So if we don't have any more, we'll just, we'll just move on. Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce this evening's presentation.
Yes, thank you, Board Member President Carolyn Jones, and to all of the board. This afternoon, we have a pretty big presentation to make that is for a conversation starter with the board. As I talked with the leadership team about this presentation, I said, this is like the presentation of a lifetime. I hope that we're never, ever in this situation again in terms of being in the pandemic. As we think about the future of schools, though, we are constantly reminded of the board's strategic plan, our strategic plan that speaks to Cincinnati Public being a place of destination. And so as we think about the future of our schools, we're also continuing to think about it as a place of destination. Next slide, please, Sarah. Our goal is to provide high-quality public education for all of our kids across the entire district, and we see this as a social justice issue. We see that this lends itself to equity, access, and opportunity, not for a subset of students, but for all of our students who attend our district. And we are committed to the social justice mission of raising the voices of our kids and also of our community in terms of what they want to see for the education of our young people. There are two key messages that we want to drive home today. And those messages are really centered around safety and health of our students. At the end of the day, we want to be considered the, or maybe one of the top places in terms of its safety as it relates to our kids being at school. And we are partnering with Children's Hospital on the safety component and help in terms of looking at how we might be able to bring our students back, if that's the decision of the board, in a healthy and a safe environment. We also want to highlight the fact that we have 24 school-based health centers within our district and a wide range of registered nurses who also serve within our schools. So health and safety is our top priority. Our second highest priority is really around the acceleration of student learning. So this is not just about academic achievement, but it's also about their performance. And so we are also committed to making sure that we can accelerate academic achievement performance at this time, which is really needed considering that our kids were not in their buildings at the end of this past full year. I just want to highlight one other thought in terms of how we staged our work. We staged it in three different areas in terms of ready, set, go. So we identified what has to be in place in order for us to be able to say, we are ready to go, to flip on that light switch, or as some say, turn on the dimmer switch, however that looks, to say that we're going to reopen the Ed Center, reopen our school offices, and at some point reopen our school buildings. And so I just want to bring this back to everyone's attention, that we put in place a guiding team. We built a sense of urgency, laid out the vision that also was informed by our strategic plan, and then started to set up and prepare people for what is to come next. And then we will be ready to go. And hopefully, we will have a decision by the end of this month, so that we are truly ready to execute on a plan to be able to open school next year. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to our Chief Communication and Engagement Officer, Krista Boyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Hi, everyone. I'm going to do a quick legislative update. There's a lot of activity on this issue at the state and federal level. And I'm not going to read through everything. I'm just going to give you kind of key points. So in terms of federal legislation, we expect that we could easily be between 35 and 70 million in pandemic-related costs, which is well over what we were allocated in terms of CARES Act funding, which currently is at about 16 million. So we have a lot of interest in the next tranche of federal funding. And we have hopes that that will include K-12 funding in it. And so we are continuing to work with Senators Brown and Portman's offices to make sure that our concerns are addressed. Next slide, please. In terms of state legislation, there is a lot of discussion right now, especially among House Republicans, to push for a five-day-a-week in-school classroom return. This is based largely on rural district experience. So we are continuing to have conversations with legislators. We will be meeting with the state superintendent. We also have a meeting coming up with the State Board of Education, the local member. There are two important bills. Next slide, please. Senate Bill 319 and 320, both of which were introduced this week. The 319 is a leadership bill, and we expect that it'll pass in some form. It covers a lot of policy-related topics. Two of note are graduation requirements and third-grade reading guarantee. Short version is both would use last year's score for purposes of moving forward. And this is in alignment with the Ohio Testing Directors Alliance recommendations. So that is good news. 320 would allow for local decision-making to open schools. Next slide. Okay, great. And so now we're going to move on to the community survey. Next slide. And first of all, I would really, I think, we would all very much like to thank the community for the incredible response. According to Thought Exchange, this is one of the largest and most engaging, or most engaged surveys that was fielded on this topic in the country. So thank you to everyone for that. Quick stats, total participation, more than 6,100 of those, about 2,300 were employees, and nearly 4,000 were parent students or other community members. Two really important themes, which will hearken back to what the superintendent mentioned in one of her early slides, remote learning concerns. And so sort of think about that in terms of academic excellence, and then ability to return safely to school. Next slide. Thank you. So this slide has a lot on it. I'm going to just, I'm going to go through really the key points. These are three really important questions that we asked around comfort level, returning to school, as well as periods of remote learning. And these were informed in large part by some of the parent focus groups we were doing, as well as some of the survey work that was done as part of the future of schools. So it was helpful to have that input prior to fielding the survey. But of note, so parents are about, and I'm going to shorthand this and call it the parent group, it does include those other folks, but it's about 89% parents make up that segment. So parents are about split on returning to the classroom and comfort level, although 5% say that they are, will not, do not intend to return their children until there's a vaccine or herd immunity. Employees are slightly more hesitant, regardless, though, of individual stance. A pretty impressive sort of feeling, strong feelings about mental, emotional health, social, emotional health, as well as ability to learn. So you'll see 74% of parents, and 71% of parents are extremely concerned or concerned. And then with employees, even more so, 81% to 82%.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle? I'm going to pause for a minute. There's a lot of really noisy feedback that I'm getting. I don't know if anybody else is getting it. And I'm on mute. And I'm on mute, so it may be somebody in the background shuffling papers or something. Please mute your phones so that we're not hearing that feedback, but it's a lot. So I just wanted to ask folks about to silence their, to mute their phones if they're not on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next slide. This really is what people cared about most. So when you had the opportunity to go in and rate the different comments, parents very focused on the learning aspect, employees on safety and health. Again, top two across all boxes, just, you know, slightly more in terms of parents' focus on academics, or not even academics, but remote learning concerns, especially classroom interaction. And then employees with the clean environment and safety. Next slide, please. And then this last slide really is around what we were hearing in some of the focus groups, and just doing a quick dive into that, really interested into, in consistent learning standards, consistent communications, universal access to technology, and IT support, as well as social, emotional development as part of academic growth. And that is it. And with that, I will turn it over to Sarah Trimble-Oliver. Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. When schools do reopen, we want to make sure that the adults and the children are as safe as possible. So the health and safety protocols that we're going to talk about here tonight come from the Centers for Disease Control Considerations for Schools and the Ohio Reset and Restart Education Planning Guide. The Ohio Guide was released in draft form in mid-May, and we're expecting an updated version any day now. Now, both of these plans were released to inform districts so that they can make the best decisions about how to open, and they're not, at this time, mandates or requirements. The implementation of these considerations should be guided by what is feasible and practical to the needs of each community. Now, the CDC guidelines consider the reopening of schools on a continuum of risks. So the lowest, lowest-risk scenario for reopening schools is that students and teachers engage in virtual-only classes and events. The highest-risk scenario is full-size, in-person classes. Students are not spaced apart. They're sharing materials, and they're mixing between classes. In the middle, medium risk is small, in-person classes, groups of students staying together, students remaining six feet apart, not sharing objects. So there are actually 31 safety precautions in the CDC guidelines, and they're grouped into four categories. So we have begun planning how to implement these items for CPS. And so what I have done here is highlighted in yellow the items that are, have significant impact, either cost or logistics in the buildings. So the first category is promoting behaviors that reduce spread. And this is about educating students and staff and parents about staying home when sick and handwashing. Cloth face coverings should be worn at all times by students and staff, and they're most essential in times when physical distancing is difficult. We would obviously need adequate supplies in the schools for soap and hand sanitizer to allow that critical precaution of handwashing. For maintaining healthy environments, the cleaning and disinfecting procedures, especially for frequently touched surfaces, will mean increased custodial supplies and time. And this also includes disinfecting on buses. Shared classroom supplies should be limited as much as possible. And ventilation should be increased to increase the circulation of outdoor air as much as possible. And this has energy consumption and cost considerations. For food service, it is recommended to serve meals in the classrooms to avoid large crowds in the cafeteria. Now, you'll notice that there's one item, item number 10, modified layouts in classrooms and buses, that is in red. This precaution actually represents one of our biggest challenges, and so I will be elaborating on this one a little bit later. For maintaining healthy operations, we want to make sure that we have flexibility and allowances for the staff and the children that are at higher risk for illness. You will notice item number 16 here is eliminating all nonessential visitors, volunteers, and activities involving external groups. There is also a precaution to keep students together in cohorts as much as possible, and actually to have the students move rooms instead of the student, I'm sorry, the teachers move rooms instead of the students, which is certainly more feasible at the elementary level more so than in the high schools. The recommendation is to stagger arrival times and dismissal times, and to also stagger the bell schedules so that students are not all in the hallways altogether. We would also be designating a COVID-19 point of contact in each school to be responsible or responding to COVID concerns, and so, such as a school nurse. We also will have to have flexible leave procedures to encourage people to stay home when they are ill or when they need to care for a loved one. We would also need to maintain a roster of trained backup staff to ensure that teaching and operations can continue if someone becomes ill. Item number 25 is conducting daily health assessments, such as temperature screening or symptom checking for staff and students, and that would be in the buildings and also on buses. And the last item shown here is very robust support for staff and students as they sometimes deal with the fear and the trauma of returning to school and dealing with the stress of living through a pandemic. The final category is preparing for when someone gets sick. So Susan Bunty's team is partnering with the Cincinnati Health Department to create procedures for reporting and tracking confirmed or suspected cases and a decision framework for when short-term closures may be necessary. The school administrators and nurses will be identifying an isolation area in each building to separate those who are ill. So those were the 31 safety precautions in the CDC guidelines. I am going to return now to the precaution called modified layouts, which calls for, and I quote, "Face seating and desks at least six feet apart when feasible. Turn desks to face in the same direction rather than facing each other." Now, based on our analysis, we will not have enough classroom space in our buildings to allow a full five-day-a-week return, five-day-a-week return for all students, and also keep six feet apart in classrooms. You'll see some classroom diagrams on the slide here. The standard 900-square-foot classroom can accommodate 15 students if the desks are six feet apart. A standard preschool or kindergarten classroom can accommodate 16 students. And some smaller classrooms that can be found at Walnut Hills and several other schools that were renovated after the facility's master plan can fit nine students at six feet apart. A typical elementary gym can hold 70 students at six feet apart. So the challenge with this six-foot social distancing in classrooms is one of the reasons that you're going to see blended and hybrid options for returning to school, which Ms. Amott will be discussing later. We also did an analysis for three-feet social distancing in the classrooms. And so a standard-sized classroom can allow 24 students at three feet apart. A preschool, the kindergarten classroom, 26 students. A smaller classroom, 16 students. In a typical elementary gym, 120 students. For the most part, this model will allow a comparable number of students to return to the buildings five days a week as compared to last year. There will be several schools where we need to do a deeper analysis for this capacity and creative use of space in order to maintain the three-foot distancing. We also did an analysis for yellow buses, as the guideline states that we should create distance between children on school buses when possible. So in this first scenario, to get one child per seat on the bus, this would allow only 24 students on a full-size vehicle and eight on a smaller special-needs vehicle. So just to give you an idea for comparison, last year, our desired minimum for an efficient bus route was 41 students. We would need approximately 214 more vehicles and drivers and roughly double our yellow bus transportation costs if we continue our current level of transportation services in that first scenario. So Mr. Johnson is in communication and learning from other school districts in Ohio and around the country about yellow bus procedures and capacity. So we are very fortunate to have a partnership with Children's Hospital as we are going through all of these safety precautions and planning for safely reopening schools. We are not only getting information from the CDC and the state, but we're also using one of children's tools, this Failure Modes Analysis Tool that you see here, to walk through a daily journey of students at school. So from the time they board the bus, they walk into school, they visit the locker, breakfast, instructional time, restroom, recess, and dismissal. We are walking through each, each point, each touch point to identify what could be the points of failure and what strategies are we going to be, are we going to put in place in order to prevent that. This is to help make the return to school as safe as possible. So at this point, I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty to discuss the social-emotional considerations.
Thank you. As Sarah has talked with us about the importance of physical safety for our children, we know from research and we know as educators deep within our hearts and as do our parents and families, that children need to feel emotionally safe so that they can maximize their achievement. So in Ohio, as you all know, we have social and emotional learning standards that address five overall competencies in self-awareness and self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision. Those learning standards are for all of our students, from kindergarten through grade 12, and we recognize that each child develops at his or her own pace and sometimes excel in one area while struggling in another. We also know that not all of our children are going to experience trauma, but all of our children face trauma. Socially, our students, the skills that they need to build really strong relationships, to understand their emotions and to manage those emotions in a very healthy way. So social-emotional learning benefits all of our students, but especially those who have been impacted by trauma. On this slide, you can see that social-emotional learning is provided in a tiered support, and it's designed to meet students' needs, particularly individualized needs in Tier 2 and Tier 3. We have staff support throughout our district who will provide the attention and the support that our students need, and also are looking at ways to support our staff. So this year, with our partnership with MindPeace during our fourth quarter, while we were virtually learning, our teachers participated in support groups with one another. Also, an awful staff will participate in trauma training, and teachers will have opportunities to participate in self-care and resiliency efforts. Next slide, please. So no matter how we come back to school, whether we are on campus, whether we're in a remote learning environment, whether we are in some combination of those, socially and emotional supports will be delivered to our students as we recognize, again, the importance of those. Next slide. I want to share with you some ways that this could look, because as we all try and figure out COVID-19 precautions, we've all had to learn new ways of interacting in our environment. And that is also especially true for our children. So our positive school culture team, which is comprised of psychologists and counselors and school social workers and principals, put together a guidance document for all of our building teams that contains many resources. You may, when you visit our school, see one, see these matrices in different environments. They're often in the cafeterias and in the classrooms and in the hallways and near where students board buses to help reinforce the behaviors that help students navigate throughout their day. We also know that we're going to really have to call out those safety behaviors just as we've had to learn to navigate in this environment, our students will too. So this is a sample of some of those behaviors and some of those expectations around COVID that we will be focusing. Finally, on the next slide, we know that if we find ourselves in a remote learning environment, we've all had to figure out how to navigate that too, how to raise our hands, how to mute, how to unmute. So those will also be taught to our students so that they can continue learning, even if we are in a remote situation. Now, our Deputy Superintendent Tiani Amat is going to spend some time talking with us about academic consideration.
Thank you, Susan. This portion. This portion. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. I heard some feedback. I will be discussing, can you hear? Thank you. Sorry, I apologize. I will be discussing possible options for the reopening in the fall. As previously stated, there was a Future of Schools Team formed, and we had a clear purpose that I would like to share with you. First off, we knew that we wanted Cincinnati Public Schools to open safely and with an innovative learning environment. There was a stakeholder group that was represented by all of our staff in the building, from custodians to families, paraprofessionals, principals, secretaries, and teachers. We gave ourselves a timeline of May 29th to develop and share recommendations to administration in order for our school teams to form and come together in June to have and develop action plans to reopen in the fall. I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our school participants, from CFT to our teachers and parents, to our principals, facilities, paraprofessionals, and clerical. In addition, I would like to thank our administrators of departments. So we had leadership participate, but they were there to listen, because this was an opportunity to hear directly from our schools. And so they were there to listen and take that information to plan in the future. So again, thank you. We had a clear process that I would like to share with you. So starting on May 8th, the team formed, got together, and we reviewed staff and parent data. We discussed international and domestic models for learning. Then there was three teams formed, one around in-person learning, blended flipped classroom, or distance learning. Myself, Assistant Superintendent Bunty, and Assistant Superintendent Murphy helped facilitate those three groups. We had a clear process called GROW. And GROW stands for looking at our goals, reality, options, and having a clear metrics of understanding when we are successful. On the 22nd, those groups reported out. And then we used our technologies and did questions and answers through chat. And then on May 29th, the whole group got together again to look at final options and discussions. So our first option is with in-person, five days a week of learning. And I thought this picture here was powerful. In conversation, when people think of in-person and going back, it will not look the same. So again, Sarah talked about no longer having community supplies, wearing masks. wearing masks in the classroom, and having the distance between all the members in the classroom environment. The presentation for all options are brought, uh, split up into two parts, one around teaching and learning and the other in safety. So first, let's investigate teaching and learning in a five-day classroom. We looked at curriculum, instruction, professional development, and support. And the team thought it was very important to have clear expectations. So with curriculum, we knew we had to look at critical standards. So the state is actually working on that, identifying which standards will be taught at each grade level. Our superintendent talked about accelerated learning. We know that we have to move quickly, wrap around services for our students, and we have to support our teachers in knowing how to do this. There are best practices to help accelerate learning. We will use district-adapted curriculum. We will require pacing with model lessons. That's where the acceleration piece come in of being clear of what you're going to teach, teach it with support, monitoring it with a variety of assessments, whether it's performance-based, um, and then readjusting your instruction to ensure all of our kids are successful. So what does an instruction looks like in, uh, in-person? It would be face-to-face. All lessons will be accessible in Schoology. Um, we are prepared, if we're in session five days a week, but we have to close in the middle of the school year, we know that Schoology is our learning, uh, platform, and we must have lessons accessible for our students and families. We will continue with CPS TV. We will continue supporting and providing accommodations for our diverse learners. Our team talked about, and also through surveys, possibly starting after Labor Day. Um, as you know, our staff is on vacation, so the first time our teachers will be back is in August. So we want to provide ample amount of time for professional development and training to be prepared for, uh, whatever model that we may select. We also talked about doing remote learning during the high flu season. So although we may be in-person, starting in the fall, possibly looking at remote learning in November prior to the winter break. And Sarah talked about breakfast and lunch being in the classroom. As far as professional development, as I stated previously, our leadership department heads were a part of the Future of Schools Committee. So these are some PD topics that, uh, was highlighted that we are currently planning to support our staff. So Positive School Culture, uh, SEL, social-emotional learning. The curriculum and ITM has developed a distinguished educator that we talked about last board meeting. Curriculum, looking at critical standards and acceleration, and how do you do this? DSS, how to support our diverse learners. And through lots of our focus groups and our surveys, we heard loud and clear from our parents that they needed to be supported, um, at home. Um, and so we want to take this opportunity to provide workshops to our parents that are school-based. Then we talked, do we have the capacity to provide learning in this format? So across here, you will see yes for curriculum, instruction, and PD. Another thing that was loud and clear from our Future of Schools group and our parents is, it's that we need a clear process of communication. So we outlined it here, starting with district communication from our superintendent, from our curriculum department, and DSS. Um, both the curriculum and DSS department have monthly newsletters that go out to schools. In addition, school communication had to be consistent. So bi-monthly robocalls and monthly newsletters to families. And then the classroom teachers doing weekly updates in Schoology. As I go through this presentation, the communication and the curriculum would be the same. So I will not read from those slides when I get to the other modules because that is a clear way of how we're going to improve our system. Next slide is around safety guidelines. So in the five-day in-person learning, Sarah talked about the transportation of one seat per child when possible. Do we have the capacity? No. What would be another option? Two-seat... Two per seat with mask. We would still need to hire additional buses, additional drivers, and monitors. And the implication will be, of course, higher cost for hiring bus monitors and buses and to have a staggered start. As far as class size of six feet, either between a nine to 15 student per classroom, do we have the capacity? No, because we simply do not have enough classrooms. An option would be the distance of three feet apart. And this would pose a medium risk, safety risk with six feet apart, and a medium-high safety risk with three feet apart. For our staffing for this model, we would need to increase staff at selected schools. The capacity, yes, we do have the capacity with reallocation of staff and needing to hire more staff. There would be a higher cost. We added childcare because we heard that from our families. Um, and not childcare, um, for before and after school, but childcare of parents needing to get back to work and if kids are home, that was a concern in a lot of our focus group and surveys. So in the five-day-a-week, the family implications would be that the students would be in school. And our second option of blended and flipped classroom. With the blended learning, the majority of the learning would be consumed at home using online resources, and then the other portion in-person. So again, looking at the curriculum, very similar with the critical standards, accelerating learning. The difference here in this module is that teachers would have to create lessons and upload the lessons into Schoology, and teachers would hold office hours. Do we have the capacity for this? Yes, and the communications would be the same. For instruction, it would be face-to-face one day a week if we had a fourth of the class or two days a week if half of the classes arrived. And online learning would take place three to four days a week. All lessons will be delivered in Schoology, continuing to use CPS TV, supporting our diverse learners. And again, uh, starting after Labor Day, remote learning in the month of November, and breakfast and lunch in classrooms, but we would also continue to have our meal hubs on those days, um, where students and families can pick up, uh, lunch and breakfast. Our professional development and parent support would look the same, and our communication. For the safety portion under blended learning, again, one per seat, one-fourth of the capacity, so we would be able to, um, have a safe route to school with one-fourth of the capacity of the students. Again, an increase of bus monitors. Additional higher cost with this model for transportation. Our class size, six feet apart, we could do with nine to 15 students in a classroom. If we went to two days a week, teachers would have to share classroom space. So for example, Monday and Tuesday, elementary students would come in, half the class, but they will have two days, and in order to, uh, meet the six-foot-apart criteria, they would use high school buildings. And then Thursday and Friday, high school students would come in and use elementary buildings. So we would have to share classroom space for this model, and it poses a medium safety risk. There would be an increase in staff. We have the capacity and a higher cost. And in this model, uh, for childcare, roughly one to two days a week. Our next option is around distance learning. If we look at teaching and learning, very similar in our curriculum. In our instruction, all five days, learning would take place at home through the delivery of Schoology lessons, um, and conferences. Yes, we have the capacity to move forward in this model, and as far as communication, it would look the same. For safety, it was a low risk. We would not provide or reduce, um, costs for transportation. It's a low safety risk for class size, and it would be a decrease in staff, reducing staff costs. However, it poses a challenge for our families for childcare. Our next option is a hybrid learning model. So our pre-K through 6 and our specialized classrooms would be in-person and use blended five days a week, and our 7th through 12th graders would be distance. The reason for this model allows for the pre-K 6 and specialized classrooms to use high school classrooms to maintain the smaller class ratio. So under curriculum, very similar. However, the instruction, as I previously stated, five days a week for pre-K through 6 and specialized classroom. With the exception of once or twice a month, having high school students come in for direct support, teacher interaction. So the elementary students would be off one to two days a month, and high school students would come in. 7th through 12th will have the, uh, distance learning. We also looked at specific classes such as career tech. Um, some of our classrooms, uh, at the high school level really require in-person instruction, so looking at, uh, preserving some classrooms for two days a week of in-person instruction at the high school level. Do we have the capacity for this model? Yes, and the communication would remain the same. So looking at our safety, the transportation, the cost would increase because we would continue to transport our youngest learners. There would be a need for additional buses, drivers, and monitors. We can also look at the option of two students per seat with mask. We would be able to maintain the class size, and it's a low risk for high school students with distance learning, but a medium risk for elementary students. There would be a potential reallocation of staff in this model. And for childcare, childcare would be in place five days a week for the elementary students, and high school students would be home. This next slide is a summary. So what we did, we took from the CDC, what Sarah shared with you, the low, medium, and high risk. So those descriptions are there. So for example, a low risk for a COVID-19 safety risk, students and teachers would be online. What we decided to do was to also measure low, medium, high for academic and emotional health. So low would be five days per week in the classroom. They have a low-risk academic and emotional risk. They would be with a classroom teacher, and we feel that nothing beats the classroom teacher, that interaction. Two days a week is a medium risk of in-person instruction, and anything less than two days a week was a high risk. So if you look at the chart of five days a week for academic, it was low on the continuum for the academic and a medium risk for the six feet apart. For the three feet, low risk, it's in-person, but it moved closer to a higher-risk safety concern. In blended learning, which was about two days of in-person instruction, that was a higher risk and a medium safety risk. For distance learning, it was a high academic risk and a low safety risk. And we broke up our hybrid model in two parts for high school and elementary. So for our high school students, it is a high risk because they're not in-person with distance learning, but a low safety risk. And for elementary, a low risk in academic and emotional, they're in school five days a week, but poses a medium risk for safety. I also want to take this opportunity to talk about CPS Digital School, Digital Academy. It was founded in 2011, and it's a great option for our families. The program is for anyone who are in, currently in homeschooling programs that are concerned with health conditions during COVID-19, if students have full-time jobs, um, students who thrive best outside of traditional learning and looking for an accelerating model, learning model. You can find more information on our website. But what makes them great is the one-on-one connection. They have highly qualified teachers, staff, CPS teachers at the Cincinnati Digital School. There's flexible scheduling, and also college preparatory work. And I don't think a lot of our, um, communities and families, even staff, realize that we already had a CPS digital school, so we wanted to get that message out as an option for our families as well. Lastly, I want to take this opportunity to share what some other countries are doing, and this was some of the research that our team looked at. So Denmark... had smaller class sizes, roughly one to 10 ratio. When possible, washed their hands frequently. They did follow the six-feet-apart guidance. In Taiwan, lots with using the mask, opening windows and vents, social distancing with the desk. And they canceled physical education, sports, and extracurriculars. In Germany, they had a variety of plans for reopening. When places did open, they did follow social distancing. In China, the use of masks, checking temperatures, social distancing. And Beijing has not opened yet. Spain and Italy has not opened yet. We also wanted to share that Israel and Korea did open and had some safety precautions, but soon closed after because they saw a spike in COVID-19. Domestically, we just have some information here from different districts. In Cleveland, they definitely talked about the compacted critical standards that we will have to accelerate learning. In Miami-Dade, actually looking to extend the summer and start earlier in the fall, providing remediation for their students. Baltimore is looking at year-round schools for underperforming schools. In Las Vegas, developing plans for some in-person schooling. And in Dallas, again, somewhat of a blended learning approach. So we wanted to give you options for discussion, share with you the low, medium, and high risk for academics and safety. Jeremy, it's now up to give you a technology update.
Hello. So in evaluating a technology model to go forward with the future of schools, we tried to look at a list of extensive requirements. And ultimately, we came down to a fairly simple list that virtually regardless of the model we look at, including those that are before you today for consideration and discussion, there's three things that we need. Devices, connectivity, and a consistent platform for instructional delivery. We took those three bases and worked them against the models that were presented and realized that while they were simple, they also overlap basically with all of the different models. And so each model requires essentially those same three items. Even the model that would be in-person for five days that maybe you would consider to be the least technologically dependent still has to be prepared and ready for remote learning on demand in the case that we were to shut down for COVID or any other reason. So in those three objectives, we, pardon me. In those three objectives, the first thing we looked at was a consistent platform for instructional delivery. Next slide, please. For that, we turn to our current platform, Schoology. And in respect to the feedback we've heard from teachers this year, as well as from this board, we wanted to do a survey to get specific issues that teachers had experienced so that we could approach those with a laser focus on making sure that this platform was the best that it could be for our purposes going forward. At the beginning of our survey, we asked the comfort level of Schoology for our teachers. And I think the important thing to call out here is that only 13% responded that they would need help to be able to go forward with Schoology usage. Forty-three percent responded that they were comfortable enough with Schoology to even help others, while 44%, pardon me, were somewhere in between. Next slide. So further, we wanted to create a baseline of the data so that we can understand where the perspective was coming from of the issues. So we asked if the problems being experienced were only during the COVID closure or if they were experienced year-round. Thirty-seven percent said they were during the closure, with 63% saying no. So that definitely pointed us in the direction that there were a few issues that existed outside of just the closure where usage expanded rapidly. Next slide. We further divided that into two subsets of what problems were reported for those responding that yes, it was only during the COVID closures and no, it was for year-round. And we'll go through these two slides pretty quick. But the most important thing is the first two options, Schoology functions and PD. A feeling that there was a lack of PD making it difficult to use the platform were the two highest answers. Next slide. For those that experienced year-round problems, the same two problems, although they swapped order, were still the top two issues reported, while none or no response given indicating they weren't experiencing problems were actually two and three interesting. So. Next slide. But really, here's what we want to look at. This is the overall data comparing, combining both of those, showing the issues that were reported with Schoology as a whole. As you can see, Schoology functions was the top. PD making it difficult, or lack of PD making it difficult to use the platform was number two. No issues were actually three, no responses were four. And then we have some smaller categories of lack of parent and family knowledge. The Schoology Power School sync, limited usage historically, and difficult for younger grades. Next slide. But here is really the important factors, right? So those issues listed in order with one exception. And what are we going to do to approach them to make the platform stronger for going forward? So the Schoology functions, and I've categorized them here with a couple of examples so that we know exactly what we're looking at. But really, the proposals come down to a very similar theme, right? And Schoology functions includes things like calendar integration, inconsistent presentation between screens. And the best, as with any software, there's features that are pros and cons over other choices of software. And the best way to address that is for us to work with the developer to request additional and improved functionality where possible. And in making sure that when we're choosing solutions, we're including all of the stakeholders in our evaluations so that we can pick which features are the most and highly prioritized. The second category is PD making it difficult to use, which we're hoping will be addressed with, as Johnny mentioned earlier, the Distinguished Educator Program that drives a much more consistent use of Schoology and for ITM to continue and expand our PD offerings. The next two categories are very related. They were lack of parent or family knowledge of the software and how to use it, and then limited usage from our teachers prior. The parents not knowing how to use the program or not having knowledge about how to use the program in the case that we need additional public training for our families, as well as guides to be made available publicly. For limited usage, interestingly, there was, it relates back to the previous category in that there are multiple applications in use across the district causing confusion for our families by not having a consistent platform. So by making Schoology required as our primary platform, we can help address that. By increasing our PD offerings to focus more specifically on making Schoology content rich and appropriate for younger grades, we can address the difficulty for younger grades issue. The last category around Schoology and PowerSync, and I believe this relates most closely to the feedback that Board Member Morowski had provided, is that there are cases where the, when looking in both of the systems between Power School and Schoology, there you can see assignments that are missing from due dates, zeros reported from grades that get updated to blanks during the process. Unfortunately, this is a required process to keep those two systems in sync. And we will continue to work with the developer and hold all the parties involved accountable to improving that system to minimize the impact of seeing those type of issues. Next slide. For Objective two and three are critically related. And I think it's important that we recognize that not only are we trying to come up with a technology model that addresses our remote learning needs, but it also addresses the digital divide's existence prior to COVID and that we work towards preventing it being something that we deal with beyond. So Objective two is to provide remote learning-capable devices to all students from grades two through 12. And Objective three is to provide internet access to students who do not have it and are unable to acquire it at home. Special note to the side, there is a model for pre-K and first grade still under development. For those grades, it's more pending what we, pardon me, what we advance and finalize for our future school options from what's presented today and other ideas so that we can handle it appropriately. So our target is to distribute one-to-one devices that are remote learning-capable to all students. I said between grades two and 12, between July and September, so that we're ready for next school year. The devices distributed will be a combination of laptops and iPads. And the approximate 6,000 devices that we previously distributed during the closures to kind of cover our emergency gaps through grades five through 12 will be recovered as we distribute the new devices so we can repurpose those for those lower grades. In looking at our total data, we have a need of approximately 35,000 total devices. So we're going, how we're going to get those devices is by taking around 18,000 of the laptops that are previously owned or leased by CPS that are currently in our schools, retooling them to be remote-capable and distributing those directly to students. The additional 17,000 laptops and devices that will still be needed, we do currently have. However, they are going to be going off lease in the next 12 months. So our plan is to proactively replace those devices now so that we have inventory to continue distributions between now and that September date. Next slide. Previously, our distributions had been hub-based. So we had four hubs that were centrally located across the district. But with this new distribution, we want to maximize our take-up rates, our availability to the students, and make it as easy and as available as possible for devices. So working with our partner, JW Affinity, who works our service desk currently, we've designed a new distribution system that will allow us to have multiple teams going concurrently at schools specifically. So depending on the size of the school, there may be one or two days dedicated. And up to the larger schools will have 10 dedicated days at the school that students can come and pick up devices. So in mentioning that we're going to be removing these number of devices out of the schools, I want to stress that ITM will collaborate with the school's leadership to ensure that the appropriate devices remain in each of our buildings for specialty labs, programs, and supplemental needs where possible. Next slide. So Objective three is connect internet access. And there has been allusions previously to a connectivity solution being worked on. And we are very happy today to be able to introduce the Connect Our Students program. So according to the most recent data from the National Center of Education Statistics, there are 25,901 households or almost 50,000 students across the greater Cincinnati area that do not have internet access. For us specifically at Cincinnati Public Schools, this is approximately 10,000 students. But in partnership with Cincinnati Bell, the Greater Cincinnati Foundation, Computer Express, and Strive Partnership, we've established a program goal to be able to provide internet access to all of our CPS students early school year 21. The first step of that was that Cincinnati Bell has created an amazing offer for internet specifically for this program that's priced at sixteen, just under $17 a month, or really $200 for 12 months of service. That's $200 for 12 months of service at an address for a whole family. However, it's the goal of CPS and the Connect Our Students program to make this a no-cost offer to qualifying CPS families through fundraising donations. One important note is that internet connections that come from the Connect Our Students program will be SIPA compliant, meaning that there's security and filtering in place that'll prevent access to inappropriate material. Thanks to some very generous funders, we are ready now to launch this program, meeting the no-cost goal to five pilot schools this month. Those five pilot schools are Rockdale Academy, South Avondale, Hayes Porter, Roberts Academy, and Fairview. CPS will be contacting the eligible families directly though by email and phone to let them know that they are eligible to request this new service in the coming weeks. One thing we want to stress is that it is critical that contact information be updated with the district so that in the contact can be verified that they qualify for the service. And a special mention to those founding funders who provided the money, the funds for this pilot, Cincinnati Children's Hospital, Interact for Health, the Carol Anne and Ralph E. Hill Jr. U.S. Bank Foundation, and the Greater Cincinnati Foundation. And one more partner not listed there, but should have been with Strive Partnership. So for the program, Greater Cincinnati Foundation is administering a CPS Technology Fund. This is where donations go. They are doing this without any administrative fees. So the fund does receive 100% of donations directly to CPS. Greater Cincinnati Foundation, along with other community leaders, are still working for, you know, additional funding so that we can rapidly expand this to our other schools. And at this point, members of the public can donate through the website created by Computer Express at www.konectourstudents.org, where they can go directly to www.gcfdn.org/cps. Along with this presentation, which is focused mostly on the program's impact for CPS and our partnership with it, a press release is going out as we speak that will provide additional details on the overall project's goals relating to narrowing and closing the digital divide across our region. So there are other schools and organizations that will be involved. And with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Mitchell.
So board members and public, you can see that our team has done a phenomenal job of combing through volumes of research and also really looking at the best practice guidelines that are being offered through the state, as well as through the CDC, as well as through Children's Hospital. In terms of thinking about what's next, today was our initial presentation for discussion and conversation with the board. We are hopeful that next week, there will be a strategic engagement and a planning committee meeting that will take place next week to get additional input. We also do believe that it is critically important for the administration to have an opportunity to discuss staffing considerations for the board before a decision is made. We are hopeful that by the end of this month, that we could have a decision so that we are ready to go in terms of launching all the work that has to happen for our schools for instruction to start in whichever format we have. We are excited about this opportunity. We're not wasting a crisis. It gives us the opportunity to do things significantly different. And so we've taken a lot of time and deliberation, but also really welcome the input from our board members. And we'd like to thank all of our staff, community members, and parents who joined in this effort. We could not have done this work without you. And again, a sincere thanks to the leadership team, a phenomenal group to work with. They have done an outstanding thorough analysis of the data and the work. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was a very comprehensive presentation, Superintendent, and thanks to the performance leadership team. I just want to reiterate what Superintendent said about laying out the timelines. This isn't an initial discussion. And I can see right now, about a show of hands, that we have tons of comments and/or questions. So we'll open it up. But I also want to point out, she also mentioned that we need to have another meeting, which I believe at this time, I mean, you saw on the screen that it is an executive session meeting. So sometime probably in executive session, we will have a discussion. So sometime, probably in executive session, we will have a discussion and nail down a date for that. So having said that, we'll open the board, open the floor up for questions and comments. Mr. Morowski, Ms. Bowers, Ms. Bolton, did I see your hand?
Not yet.
You know you did.
Okay.
Oh, not yet.
I know, I know. Mr. Morowski, Ms. Bowers, and then Ms. Bolton. Well, it's everybody. Well, I'll get you. I got you. There you are. Thank you. Mr. Morowski.
All right. So that was insanely impressive, Superintendent Mitchell and your team. What a well-thought-out presentation, my goodness. I am exceptionally impressed, too, with that little piece of information that we have been polled and heard from more of the community than just about every district nationally, urban district like us. So kudos for taking tons of community input. This is great. I am, I have so many questions, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna do the big ones because I know we're gonna keep talking about this. So first of all, I need to give a shout out to Deputy Amat, because one of my questions was, can I see all of the options and risk in one graph? And as soon as I typed that, it was her next slide. So I guess you've been hanging out with us long enough. So that was great. And I know I was also then about the parents, will they get a chance to like weigh in on this? I know that answer is yes. So along with parents, so I guess I really only have two major and then one for Krista regarding Columbus. But regarding parents, in these options, is there any, is there any leeway for parents to have a choice? Say we go to a hybrid and elementary are back, which at first glance, that's my favorite model, just to put it out there at first glance. I like that. I like the elementary kids being in school every day. It's important. It's important for all of them, but it's exceptionally important for those kids. Is there any option for parents to opt out if they don't feel safe? Now, whether or not their child is immunocompromised or not, just curious if that would be built in, or if you've thought about that?
So first of all, I'm gonna ask the PLT to be on standby to answer questions. This is a team effort. So we have really worked to beef up and will continue to beef up our digital option in terms of our digital academy. If there are parents, like the 2% who said, or 5% who said that they are not going to send their children back until there's a vaccine. And so I know that our curriculum department is going to be doing a lot of work to beef up our digital option. So anything else that you'd like to add? Tiana?
Well, but you're absolutely right. There's a framework and a format in place at the Digital Academy. It serves kids K through 12, and we are aligning our work with them, the curriculum department, to better enhance and get the word out that we have that as an option for our families.
Great. And then along those same lines, with the same principle, look similar, or at least an amended version for teachers? Because obviously, I know we'll have some immunocompromised teachers, but maybe if they're like, I just, I'm not comfortable being back. And you don't need to obviously answer that if it hasn't been thought out, but it's something I would throw out there.
Yes. So our general counsel, Dan Hoing, and our HR director, they have worked on a process flow for those staff members who may not have a comfort level of coming back to work because of compromised health or for other reasons. And I will say that it does have a limited time in which you can be off and still be paid. And so Paul, if you would like to speak to that, that would be great.
Sure. I'd be glad to. Thank you for the question. As Superintendent Mitchell said, we have constructed a flow that we've already shared out in small scale, central office, and then also to our schools as we started to open our school buildings as well. It gives guidance. It gives how one could take off. They fall into different categories, whether they're caring for someone that has COVID, whether they're having healthcare issues, whether they have a compromised immune system themselves. Though, as Superintendent Mitchell said, there is a limited amount of time that one could take off, but there are options that we can make available to our staff. Most importantly, we, just as much as we want our students to be safe, we want our staff to be safe as well.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then just a couple, one more about the schools and then one about the Columbus's decisions. Thank you, Mr. McDowell. I appreciate you very much. So for all the models, there's going to be higher costs in some respects. And so to return to the hybrid one, which, again, at first glance, I'm fond of, it's kind of a two-part question. The first is, if we are splitting up all of the kiddos in the school theoretically, or not theoretically, I'm imagining that 7 through 12, if they're at home, we're not going to need extra staff, but we're splitting up the classes, we'll need to probably hire a decent amount of new teachers. Am I thinking about that correct? Okay. So one thing, not to add to the cost, but my, 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 I'm curious, just logistically, space-wise, would there be enough room in our schools to include 7th and 8th graders in that, too? And the reason I just, I'm thinking of 7th is for a number of our kiddos, they're going to be in new scenarios in 7th grade. And again, that informal-formal friend-making is so important. And so if you're leaving your school, and you're leaving South Avondale and you're going to Walnut Hills or wherever you're going, is there room? Is that even feasible to do K through 8? I'm just curious.
So when we initially started discussing the hybrid, we looked at pre-K through 7, because we thought about 6th graders transitioning to high school, and they're going to transition to a remote learning opportunity, which we didn't think was potentially the best. But we don't have the capacity to cover 7th and 8th grade with the space that we have, even with the high schools. I will say that we did figure and look at the staffing that would be required with the hybrid, as we looked at the staffing that's required at all. Even though we looked at reallocating staff, so moving staff and thinking about staff differently, so we did all of that work, literally school by school. So there's a sheet for every school. Even with having the reallocation of staff, we would probably still need to hire more staff members to break the kids down to smaller curriculums.
Okay. Cool. And then my last one, I appreciate that, Superintendent. This is great. The last one, then, I guess it's for Krista. You mentioned the two bills. Has there been any traction from that little sort of cadre GOP folks that were talking about leaving the decision 100% in local districts? Or did that just sort of like die before it got anywhere?
I am not aware that there's anything aside from Senate Bill 320 that would give local control right now. So I'm not sure about anything in the House, but we can double-check.
Cool. I appreciate it. And also, let me just say that I really, Krista, while you're on here, I really appreciated that update, Ms. Boyle. As a policy person, it's nice to get those. And as folks are used to hearing me say, I'd like to get them maybe every meeting someday. Or maybe I'll just join Finance Committee. So that was great. Thank you so much, and I'm done.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowers? Yeah. Thank you, everybody. That was a lot of information. I was taking nice notes. Special shout out to Jeremy. Congratulations with that team on expanding the partnerships and the business community around expanding technology accessibility for all of our students. The questions that I have, the first one is really for, I guess, Sarah and Deputy Superintendent Amat, thinking about project-based learning and what that looks like virtually, either in a, I guess it could be a hybrid or distance learning? How that looks, especially with some of the schools that are more project-based and others, especially like Montessori? Is that a change in that curriculum on how they interact with those options? Another question I have is the athletics. If we did distance and hybrid and blended learning, how would that look for our high school athletes as far as athletics and some of our middle school as far as athletics? And then that transportation cost, if they are not in the school, how do they get to the school? If we, if we do have athletics? I heard that, was it Taiwan, that discontinued the physical ed and athletics altogether? And so does that mean that if we have distance learning and even the hybrid for the high school, would that eliminate that for us? And then the last one was our special ed students. Thinking about distance learning and hybrid learning in high school and the struggles that we have had during COVID-19 with them having the adequate amount of support that they need and that families need, especially around technology? How that would interfere with them being able to have the face-to-face life skills, training, things that they need based on IEPs, what have you? How would that affect them if they're distance in high school, hybrid learning? So I know that was a lot of questions.
Well, Board Member Bowers, I would jump in for problem-based learning. For the hybrid and the remote learning, the most important part of that is getting the instruction ahead of time. So when they are consuming knowledge at home, they know exactly what to do. So you can have a remote hybrid approach, but the preparation, the curation of lessons, in particular videos to support learning and the video conferencing. Typically, with that approach, it has to be clear what the end goal is. I think it's an excellent opportunity to look at a social justice project and really addressing concerns that our students have in the community. And you typically work with organizations. So the learning is outside of the classroom. Research is outside of the classroom. So depending on, and I think we should do this work in all of the modules, to be quite honest. But we can maintain a project-based learning approach in those models. But we have to use our technology, lots of planning ahead. And in project-based learning, it's very student-driven. Students usually come up with the solution, actually, the problem that they're trying to solve. So it can happen.
Okay. In terms of athletics, we did look at athletics in terms of being able to provide a bus card or tokens for kids to be able to go from home to athletics after school, if that was an option that the board was interested in. I also do want to just give one other little point of clarification with the high school. In any situation, if the high schools are remote, whether the entire district's remote or just the high schools are remote, the kids would be scheduled into classes during regular school day time. But Deputy Superintendent Amat expressed a concern over, which is a legitimate one, screen time. So for, this is just an example, a kid would be scheduled into four face-to-face classes in a day, so a four-hour block of time, where you're logging on and you're going into Google Meet and you're sitting in a classroom with your peers and your teacher is teaching you. So it isn't completely like you're completely off by yourself. And then the rest of the time, you would be working on your own. But kids would be actually scheduled into classes with their classmates and their teachers through Google Meet. But just not for the entire day. So I wanted to clarify that.
And then Board Member Bowers, I appreciate your question about our students with disabilities. Thank you so much for asking about that. So we have thought a lot about our students for whom access is difficult in a remote environment. And in any of those models, students who are in specialized classrooms will participate face-to-face. So that is something that we are definitely in conversations with folks about, that they would, if they're in classes for students with autism or students in multiple disability classrooms, that they would return to.
So regardless of the distance learning or the hybrid, our special needs students would be in the buildings?
Not necessarily all of them, but our students who are in specialized.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
And that's why on the, on the screen where Tiana talked about not a complete elimination of transportation costs for remote, we would still have the transportation costs for kids who are in specialized classrooms.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Ms. Bolton, followed by Mr. Lindy, and then Ms. Bates.
Okay. Thank you very much. Wonderful. I'd like to use the word considerations rather than options, because I think we're going to be getting some options eventually from which to choose. But I think this is extremely impressive, and I appreciate the work, thousands of hours to this work. I have a question for Jeremy. From the mobility standpoint, this access breakthrough is huge, huge, absolutely huge. How does it, I don't know the technology of it, how will that, how will the mobility of our families impact that? Or are they able to carry something with them? I don't know enough technology to know. So if you could speak to that, because we know on any given day, 20% of our kids might be in a different school than they were the day before, and that's in a normal time. So how does that work?
So this particular offering is an address-based installation. So the, the internet connection will go into the house, but it is something that can be portable from, if a student were to move from one location to another, as long as they update the CPS records, the contact information with CPS and Cincinnati Bell, that service can be moved with them.
That's great. That's really great. Hopefully, we can do that faster than we're able to change bus routes. So I think that would be fantastic. That's a breakthrough. Thanks to everybody that worked on that. And I did notice, as a follow-up about athletics and after-school, when Sarah presented, she talked about the breakfast and classes and, but didn't say anything about after-school. And I don't know if it's Sarah's question or if it's to the superintendent, have we started to think about that? Or are we doing first things first?
Can you clarify, when you say after-school, it's like, what's your question?
Well, after-school would be athletics or other extracurricular. It could also be, it could also be that we have an extended school day because of our community learning centers or lead agencies, or that we, our, our school day isn't an eight to three in many of our buildings. And I don't know if we've started to, I'm sure you've all started to think about that, but if you could address that, that would be perhaps useful.
So we could provide funding for transportation for after-school activities, like at the high school level, where they were talking about clubs, so things that go beyond athletics. We had not dug deep into other after-school programming other than the Schedule E-type things.
Okay. Well, it might be, it might be part of something to think about. Thank you so much for at least mentioning a couple of times Career Tech, because I think in this crisis, you know, these are the kids that kind of got shut out the most, and it's now such an important part of CPS. Another thing, I get worried about these transportation costs, and I get worried about the talk about having to hire and hire and hire more people. We don't have the money to do those things all together. And so I think, trying to think in terms of repurposing staff, and then also, we're going to have to find something to do about transportation. But thank you for, for putting all that together. Finally, I'm just going to state an opinion, which is of course not unusual, but as a high school teacher for 36 years, high school teachers and high school students need to see each other in a classroom, even if it's two days a week. It's so hard to establish the relationship. It's so hard for kids to learn from one another, because that's what happens in high school. They learn from one another. So I just, I really, it's the only kind of opinion I have, but I worry about the first time there's a suicide, the first time we have a kid that's not attending school, and that was his or her identity. And if we have extracurricular, we better be able to have a classroom. So I just, and I'm so impressed with what you've all done. I've talked to a number of other board members around the state. You are, you are heads and shoulders and feet and legs ahead of everybody else. So thank you, and I look forward to this next meeting. And I'm just real CPS proud right now.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I want to echo, I think, what every board member has.
I want to echo, I think, what every board member has shared, Superintendent, for you and your team, which is an enormous amount of admiration and respect for the work you all are doing. And there's no but coming at the end of this. I think that, I think that's just 100% true. I think one thing that you all are modeling is this is a situation that is hard with no easy answers, where no matter what the ultimate choice is, significant numbers of people I think are going to be unhappy and understandably so. This is just really hard and I don't see any path forward that doesn't involve really hard trade-offs, where reasonable people might come to different conclusions. And I appreciate your leadership through that. I wanted to be specific about some things I thought were really great. And then I had a, I think, two, a question and a thing I wanted to note for later on. I love how systematic it is, thinking through different options, what the things we care about are and how the different options trade off. I think it's very creative. I hadn't thought of the hybrid model until I saw it in the presentation. So I thought that was, that was fantastic. And I just think it's honest about costs, about safety, about trade-offs. And I think that's great. So thank you. I also think the technology win is awesome. I'm so excited that there's a plan to make sure every kid is connected for next year. I think that's wonderful, wonderful, wonderful work. And if there's anything I can do to support that, I would like to. I think on the question side, you know, this has been hinted at a bit by like Mike and Eve. I just wanted to hear from the superintendent on the, on the hybrid option, does this mean we're doubling the number of elementary school teachers we have in CPS? Like, do we, do we have money for that? Like, are there contractual or legal reasons why we couldn't do some of that? Like, I just wanted to get a firmer understanding of how that works. And then let me just flag my last thing here because then I'm finished. I think there is, once we land whatever the final plan is, I think there's a next whole set of questions about student learning next year in whatever plan we're running and how like the, the culture-building needs or responsibilities of teachers and school leaders, the kinds of lesson planning we need to be doing, the kind of assessments we need to be using. There are just so many interesting and important questions on the student learning front. I'm excited to get into that with you and your team. I don't think now's the time because I think, I think we're doing the first order stuff first, but I'm excited to have those kinds of conversations when we get further down the field. But I am fascinated in this elementary school teacher question.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have to double the number of teachers at the elementary level. We did talk about, quite honestly, how we reallocate staff and use them differently to break kids down into smaller groups. So just one example is, you know, right now or this past school year, you know, a group of 22 kids might all go to gym together from a classroom. So maybe you break that down into a smaller group and have more of a rotation, not just within your teaching team, but across art, music, PE, to be able to break kids down into smaller groups as well. The hybrid model would require additional staff. And I, and I say that after we literally went, Paul did an analysis with his team, literally school by school on a page, listing every single staff member and how we might redistribute people and think about it differently to break kids down into smaller groups. Even, even having done all of that work, we would still have to add some staff. But to Board Member Bolton's comment, I mean, all this comes at a huge cost, which is the reason we would love to have this conversation with the board about personnel matters on an extended period of time. And in terms of the student learning and culture, we also really look forward to that conversation in terms of what it might look like for next year. But I think Deputy Superintendent Ahmad has laid out a really strong foundation that a lot of people feel very comfortable with, but that obviously, you know, we're always wanting to improve. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Bates?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me? My video keeps on cutting out, but audio's okay, right? Okay, I have a few questions. First of all, I really am in favor of the idea of starting after Labor Day. And if we can get other districts on board, not only will this give our educators a time to plan and get PD, do team planning and reconfiguring their curriculum, but we can tout it as a way that we're, you know, our school districts are contributing to the, in a positive way, to the economics of this state because businesses are just now opening up. And if we started, and usually do, that's really going to cut, you know, the summer season short when families are together. So if we can get, especially in our district, the charters and parochials on board so we're not running buses, but even kind of spread the word, because I think that's, you know, a really good way to kind of pitch in and, you know, even though it's not, doesn't have the educational value, but it does help bring our economy back, back up to where it could be, should be. Another...
We can't hear you, Ms. Bates.
We can't hear you. No.
It looks like our mute button is on.
Your mute button is on.
Yeah, but the moderator keep, yeah, this is better. It says the moderators.
Okay.
I don't know. Maybe he doesn't like what I'm saying. If we are going to have a shortened school year, we should also be advocating for not, for a waiver so that we don't have to extend the school year. And we could certainly justify that with our smaller class sizes, which, you know, they're getting to the level where, you know, data has shown that that size class, those smaller classes have a bigger impact. But that way we're not, you know, backloading our schedule and that would create some savings, certainly in transportation. Not, maybe not personnel, but in transportation it could. And then the other question I have is that are the, when these curricula are being reconfigured, I've heard about reconfiguring them for virtual learning and for smaller class sizes and blended learning, but I haven't heard anything about outdoor education. And the health experts are saying that outside is safer. And we have the environmental programs, the expeditionary learning, we have Montessori that would all lend themselves to that and we might be able to have some days that, you know, we may not have to reduce class sizes depending on what's going on. So I think parents would like that as, I would assume they would like that as well because, you know, that's figured out as a safe way and a healthy way to survive COVID-19, you know, quarantine and social distancing. So thank you.
If there are no more questions, I'll just tag on, most, I had like eight questions, but they've all been addressed. So I'm gonna, I have a couple of things that might get into the weeds a little bit, but the first one is on the issue of the laptops, the computers. Is that based, is that a per child, per student issue or per household? And I'm asking about access. So if there are four CPS students in a one address, is that four computers?
Yes, they would all have their own computer, grades two through 12. I'm sorry, sorry, Jeremy, I didn't steal your thunder.
But yes, as Laura stated, it would be one device per student and then the connection would be into the household to serve all of them equally.
Right. And I, I just want to commend you all on the work with the partnerships and forming the partnerships. I mean, that, that's a great deal. And I think it'll just accomplish so much in us moving forward with the digital piece and providing access to internet that's really going to be helpful. So really, congratulations on that. I too have an idea of my preference, although I'm not going to share it right now because I think I'm, want to wait until we have a discussion about costs. District have a sense of how many parents at this point in time are opting one way or the other? Do we have any sense of that? So are there parents who might be calling saying, I just want Digital Academy, that's it? Or, you know, and I know nothing's definitive and given that we had 359 attendees, they're listening very closely. So I don't know, you may not be able to ask that, but it's, it's just, you know, and I think also if parents make a decision, I don't know if the parent decision would help us drive our decision based on numbers of kids who we know will enroll in one particular option per se or not, if, what that does to cost. I, I just don't know. But, so, I don't know if you can even answer that question.
What, what we do know, and Krista, please feel free to chime in, is according to the survey, 2% of the families who completed the survey said that they would not send their child back until there was a vaccine.
Gotcha. Okay. That was my question. Okay. And then my final question, this is the one that really gets into the weeds. So when the, and I love diagrams, that's, that's what I like to see and Mike, Mike made a point about the one, one slide that sort of told the big picture and I was pleased with that. So if in any given classroom, you know, we all have gone to the schools, we go in the classroom. So here we are now with our great concerns about the sanitation of the room, maintaining that and frequent disinfecting, that kind of thing. So when we're calculating the space in terms of six feet versus three feet, are we considering all the stuff that's in these classrooms? The learning tools and all of which are important, but it may not be important at all, but are we considering that at all?
I'll ask Sarah to chime in. In some instances, it may be a good opportunity for us to clean out some rooms to create more space for kids.
So the only thing I would add to that is it definitely is, is going to be a challenge and a question. And so we're going to have to be very creative in addressing that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And then finally, Jeremy, I appreciate the information and the graphs that you showed around the digital use, schoology. That's, you know, we've heard that for a long time about what some of the challenges with that. So it sounds like this study kind of, or this survey kind of really pinpointed that as a particular need for further development. So I really appreciated seeing that. Okay. And I too want to congratulate staff for, for the very comprehensive report. Again, this is an initial conversation and we will be talking later about the executive session meeting and then where we are in terms of the final presentation and the need to make a decision. Okay, so are we ready to move on? Okay, so Treasurer Wagner informed me that right as we were closing out hearing of the public, we had one person who was trying to get in. I said we would get them in at the end of the presentation. So Treasurer Wagner, are you there?
I'm here.
All right. Is it our, can we bring up our last speaker?
So Ms. Sellers, you need to accept your... Ms. Sellers, we need to, you accept the presenter, the handoff. We can bring you into the presenter's side.
I don't know. Okay. Maybe, maybe she left. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Board Matters. Mr. Morosky, you have the first one on the potential resolution.
Yes, I do. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all so much. I, I think this is a really important discussion and, you know, the, the agenda item, and this is nobody's fault but mine, I think made it, the wording of it is maybe, maybe not, but maybe, whoa.
Hello, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
Did I just go into your meeting? Did I blue jean bombed you?
Ms. Sellers, you can go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry if I was, okay, I have a lot of trouble getting into these blue jean meetings with this platform. But I just want to reemphasize, I know that tons of work went into the plan. I do have concerns that there were not enough teachers involved with their, those plans and what it's really going to look like in the classroom. And I want to make this one comment before I start because there was a comment made that teachers are on vacation. Teachers are not currently on vacation. They are on unpaid time outside of their contract year. And it really is shocking to me how many people believe that teachers are on vacation. No, we're not on vacation. These are not paid days. We don't have vacation time. So I do want to say that, I do know that they're making projections that the budget is possibly next year going to be a $34 million deficit. While we don't have a current budget and based on the five-year forecast, that doesn't seem to be accurate, but these projections are causing a lot of rumors of furloughing staff. There are being comments that are being made by principals and managers, which teachers are finding threatening and finding that it is making them feel like, will I have a job or won't I have a job? I've had teachers calling me crying, like, what do they mean when they say that they're not going to need all teachers? But this type of communication, especially anything to do with furloughing, should only be coming from the superintendent and treasurer to HR and CFT. We should be working through these plans. And I was really surprised when they said that they were able to go through school by school by school to see how they will do coverage of classes at this point. So far, I am totally unaware of any type of furlough plan that the district may be developing. I know that CFT did a ton of work upfront. We put in thousands of hours of what it is that teachers need. I know that tons of teachers filled out our survey, hundreds of teachers. We sent out a text mail and I know hundreds of teachers responded to the district's survey. And sometimes I'm not sure exactly where some of the input is because some of what the district said they were hearing and what we were hearing were sometimes different. But what you can see from the COVID plan, whatever it is, we shouldn't be talking about furloughing right now. We need to be taught because all of the plans...
Ms. Sellers, Ms. Sellers.
Yes.
And, and if you can hold on, I don't typically interrupt any speaker, but I am concerned and maybe Mr. Hoin can help me with this. Is this something that is what we consider a personnel issue?
No.
I'm asking Mr. Hoin, I'm asking, I'm asking Mr. Hoin. Mr. Hoin, can you advise us on that? If it's not, I don't have an issue, but I'm just asking for an interpretation so that we are staying in compliance of the rules.
I, I think it's appropriate for Ms. Sellers as the teachers' union to talk, to talk in general about personnel matters, though, you know, considering the length of the meeting already, it may be appropriate to expedite these comments.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Sellers, I just had to ask the question. Go ahead.
I always thought in my 12 years that I just can't talk about individuals. So the COVID plan, we're going to be needing more teachers in every one of those plans, but I'm not sure what the district believes is... what the district believes is core curriculum, because that was mentioned several times. But I do know that based on state and national standards, the arts are considered core subjects. And many times, the arts are what really motivates students to be fully engaged at school. And this leads me to, and I think that it came up several times when they talked about the flow chart on how teachers will be able to use leave time. But this leads me to communication about with employees and families individually to determine who and how many people will not be able to attend in person. And I know that students are going to have options for remote learning. But, but there are also teachers who have medical conditions that they would also be able to not take a leave of absence, like the flow chart says, but that they would be able to do remote teaching for those families. And I do know that there was something brought up about the, the digital academy. And we do not want families or teachers that, to have those kids enrolled at the digital academy and lose their spot at their school. And this is part of what they were talking about with the reallocating of staff. But I think that it is, principals are telling teachers that all non-load-bearing teachers are going to be cut. And this has been reported to be made by many teachers. And this is causing anxiety among not just teachers, but also paraprofessionals. But a lot of teachers, even throughout this meeting today, there were, and if this meeting was in person, the auditorium would have been full with teachers to hear what is going on, because there has been little communication. But teach, high school teachers are terribly worried about the hybrid option, because they said they're students. Sometimes it's difficult for them in high school. And if they're only in school once or twice a month, that really means that those elementary kids in those high schools are going to be out four or five times each time students are in, high school students are in school, because they will also have to come back and socially distance. So that one day might be four days in a row or five days in a row, depending on how many students and what the classroom analysis is. And so I would like to know what some of those analyses are for the reallocation of staffs. But if, if, I know, I guess you're going to be talking on June 22 about that. And I hope that that's going to be done publicly as teachers are making plans. And I just want to say that because we are in a stalemate at this time, we're not able to move forward. And we also have principals who are making comments to teachers that our contract is expiring in X number of days. And once our contract expires, they can do whatever they want. And this is absolutely not true. It's not correct. Our contract remains in place throughout the entire process as we are moving forward. And I hope that we can have a clear communication from everyone. I have reported this to different members of the district, and, but it's still continuing to happen. But I don't think that anybody should be talking to any teachers about, you're going to be not around, you're going to be furloughed, and we don't have need for you because you don't teach a core subject area, when we haven't even identified what this core subject areas are. So if, I wish we were in person. I think it makes it really difficult having these kinds of conversations not in person. And I think it's really alienating for most of the employees who are on the call watching. I know it was up to at one point, 379 people. And that number did start dropping. So I don't know, but we need to have clear communication. And if that's coming from the board, that needs to come from the board, that they value our teachers and that administrators should not be walking around threatening teachers at this point.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sellers. We, as you know, we typically don't do responses, but the superintendent would like to respond. And then, and then I would ask, because we do need to move on. So Superintendent, go ahead with your comments.
It would be remiss of me not to address some of the issues or concerns being brought forward by CFT President Sellers. So since COVID, since we left school on March the 13th, I have had weekly meetings with the union presidents on Friday, giving them information as to what's going on, as well as collecting their questions from them. I also have monthly meetings with Ms. Sellers that she could bring up any of these topics. She was offered the opportunity to sit on the teacher's team, and she decided to defer her position to someone else so that she could go to another team. Many of the things that are being stated are sheer speculation, and it is not coming from the administration. And again, I don't normally respond, but it would be remiss of me to allow statements that are not accurate to sit in the room unchallenged. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go ahead. Thank you, Ms. Sellers. No, we're going to go ahead, Ms. Sellers. I'm sorry. We're going to move forward with the, with the agenda. So let's go back to the discussion. Mr. Morosky, Board Matters.
Thank you, President Jones. So former Board Member Ozzy Davis kind of alluded to some of what I wanted to talk about during his piece in that, you know, it's a real moment for school districts to rethink how they teach anti-racism, teach Black history. Thankfully, similar to the COVID response, being such an agile district with such great leadership, we were ready to pivot. I feel the same way about this issue. And as I was saying before, we kind of went back to hearing of the public. I think that maybe the wording of what I intended to talk about right now might have translated poorly into, as resolution on, etc. I don't have a resolution. I don't even know if a resolution is what will come out of this. But what I wanted to do was to sort of open it up during Board Matters for my colleagues who I trust and who are always so instructive to my thinking as to what we could potentially do going forward. And we've already had a long meeting. There's a lot on our heads. So I'm not expecting us to figure it all out right now. But what I would like to say is for the board members who are here before Ben, or Mr. Lindy, Mr. Messer, Ms. Bowers, and me, so that's President Jones, that's Ms. Bates, and that's Ms. Bolton, I would kind of like to start by saying thank you to you three and the four members who are no longer on the board for teeing up our Equity Policy 2255, which has governed the work of the district since its passage. I would like to thank this current incarnation of the board, plus former Board Member Ozzy Davis, for the work in the strategic plan that calls out very explicitly identifying and reducing racial disparities in every aspect of student achievement. That's discipline, academic achievement, AP enrollment, and identification of disabilities, on and on. I feel that we do an awesome job with this. Let me rephrase that. I feel we do a great job with this. We could do a much better job with this. And I kind, I just wanted to see where people's heads were at with that. I have a document with a number of options that I've sort of put together, my own, and then from input from teachers that I'm fine with sending to the superintendent in the form of an assignment or of some kind at the end of this meeting. They include everything from different anti-racist training for teachers under Jenny Mauk's leadership. We've had a lot of good implicit bias training. And then Dr. Rachel McMillan at Akin, who went through the Leadership Educational Leadership Institute at Miami, I know you're all familiar, some ways you were formed with Rachel. She has been looking at what K through 12 Black history curriculum looks like. So not an elective, not one year, because as we all know, there are two histories in America. There's the dominant one, and there's a subordinate one. And I have learned through my own implicit bias training as a white male in America of privilege, that it is incumbent upon people who look like me and my son James to integrate, because it's unfair and it's unreasonable to ask a subordinate culture to integrate. And that's what we've done for 400 years. And that is a different kind of curricular notion. And while everything is sort of being reinvented, and because of the leadership of my three colleagues who are here with 2255 and the strategic plan, I just felt like it was maybe worth teeing up the conversation. I am interested in knowing what y'all's temperature is. So again, if y'all expected me to have some like magic resolution, again, that's probably my bad. I did not. That was not necessarily the intention. Maybe resolution is what's needed. We've put out a statement, but I think maybe taking the time to double, triple down on some of the things we've already have in place might be worthwhile. So I really am just, I'm really interested to know what you all think. And if, I know you've had ideas pop up in the past week or so, and I just kind of, I guess, wanted to create a space where we could talk about that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Do board members want to comment on this particular item? Yes, Mr. Lindy?
I'm mute.
Thanks, President Jones. I was gonna say, at some point I would, but I think Board Member Morosky asked a great question. And I'm really interested in hearing the responses to, because that might inform anything that I might share.
Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Yes. I think it is a discussion we should have publicly together. I don't know that it should be now as we're facing these major decisions right now, except rededicating ourselves as we make these decisions to those values that, and those concerns that we have. But I think it might be a resolution. It could be a policy that specifically states that, which I feel more strongly about than having a resolution. I've always resisted making the equity policy strictly racial. And so maybe there is, you know, a freestanding one addressing race particularly down the road. I think that's a possibility. I am going to say, though, and I've, and I've said it before, I think we can be proud of our proactivity, not only on the, as you mentioned, the equity policy, and certainly the strategic plan, but also on, on at least two curricula that I think are important, which are our adopted social studies curriculum and our language arts curriculum. So I think a review of those that are so recently adopted would give some solace and some hope for a lot of people. And so when we, I think that has to be built in and recommit, but I think, I think it's a policy that speaks to systemic and institutionalized racism, you know. Somebody's at the door. That it speaks to whatever we're trying to communicate. So yes, down the road in the next couple of weeks, sure.
Okay, other comments? Ms. Bates, is your hand up? Yes. Ms. Bates, unmute, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Good. I think this is a great opportunity to continue our work with the students and cohere, and hear from our students, and organize a stand around that.
Yep.
So let's, let's continue those conversations. Let's have a statement, but let's have a very thoughtful statement. And let's, let the students take the lead on this, because they're the ones who are in our schools, receiving the education. And we need to respect, we need to respect them and their opinion. And this is a very important opinion to have and provide input to us.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, I would just like to close, agree with Board Member Bates, because I think a few years ago at Gamba Montessori, there was a community discussion around race relations, or just around the number of, or the percentage of referrals that African-American students were being referred for behavioral issues. And students were involved in that discussion. So I think that can be expanded with respect to what Mike is talking about, and having a platform to be heard. Our students do need to be heard. And that cohere experience last week was, was excellent. But I think on top of that, there is a disparity within our district about discipline. And I think that those things need to, that conversation needs to either restart or extend, so that our students can be heard with retrospect to what the climate is right now in our community. I think it's the ideal time. How that looks, Mike, I don't know if it is a resolution, if it's a new policy. I like Eve's idea of a separate standing policy, because I think it needs to be pulled out, especially with the current climate, specifically around race. So I would, I would condone that, Eve, if that, if we, you know, policy, if that's something the board says that needs to happen.
Mr. Morosky?
Yeah, I, I really like the idea of an explicit policy that calls out an anti-racist stance in the district or administration of curriculum, discipline, whatever it ends up becoming. I don't, I don't want to talk too much about it, because I don't know. But I think that, that is an assignment I will make at the end of this meeting to General Counsel. And, and I will kind of look around and research things as well. I think that's, I think that's a really good idea. And also, I was kind of remiss before. I was trying to give my shout outs to all my, my friends that have been on this board longer than me. So you three, President Jones, Ms. Bates, and Ms. Bolton. And another thing that you did that I think took a lot of guts, and that I know I was cheering you on for, was ending the campouts. And so I, again, I think a lot has already happened to, to make strides. But I do think, and I want to hear from the students too, I also think that to the best of our ability, the Santa Ana School Board unanimously approved a new curriculum yet, yesterday, that'll be in effect 2122 school year. It's interesting. I'll send you a link when I send my document to the superintendent, or at least a bit about it. But to the best of our ability, you know, to train our students to take that sort of anti-racist stance, I think will be, be important. So anyway, I'm good, I'm good. Ms. Jones, you're the only one who spoke, and so.
Yeah, I, Mr. Lindy, last comment?
Please feel free to go ahead. I just, I had, now that I've had a chance to hear from everybody, I wanted to throw out my two cents. I'm very happy to follow you.
Okay. Well, if you have a comment, I am going to make a comment, but you'd like, you can go ahead.
No, please.
Okay. Okay, I think that what we're talking about, what, what I keep hearing is a recommitment, which is fine. And whether we do that in writing or in practice, I think is where, where I am in terms of what that commitment looks like. And I think, you know, we've made lots of strides. I think we have one of the best equity policies that I've seen written. And I've researched them, and I've seen them. I think for me, it is in the, you know, racism is not only systemic, it's also systematic. And I saw, I think, Ms. Bowers, you said something about that in a message or something. And I think paying attention to what our curriculum looks like, paying attention to what our schools look like, the diversity, those are all things that we are doing. But then the question falls back as, are we doing enough of what we need to be doing? And that is systematic, in my opinion. So I, you know, if it's a policy, I would support it. I don't think it's a resolution. If it's a policy that really focuses on us, really gives us a focus around looking at that, I'm okay with that. But it really is a practice of this board and this administration in terms of how we reimagine the schools and how we build in all of these things that help us address racism. I don't know if that makes sense. But so I don't think we, you know, I, I'm glad you put it on the agenda, Mr. Morosky. And, and let me clear up, whenever we put something under Board Matters, it's always discussion. It was, it is confusing, because there was never any intention of, again, a resolution. It was mainly around discussion of whether or not we needed a resolution. But it's okay, it's okay. So that's where I am with it. So wherever, whatever assignment you have, we, I think we should move forward with that, and we'll, we'll, we'll address it at that time. Okay. Mr. Lindy, did you have a last comment?
Yeah, and I can be very brief because I think really I just agree with everything you shared, Carolyn, particularly like the importance of, of practice in addition to resolutions. And I'm, and I also, I'm glad, Mike, you brought it up. I wanna also reiterate that I like the statement we, we released and the recommitment to the equity policy, I think Student Voice, all these things, I think are great. The only thing I wanted to add is two things. I do think we have an upcoming opportunity to do something here when we see, when we set what the, the top level goals for the district are for next school year. Because I think there could be goals and outcomes that are aligned to that equity policy. So given wherever we're starting, here's where we wanna be a year from now, it would be meaningfully improved. So I think that's a, that's an exciting upcoming opportunity there. And I just wanted to note, one thing I don't know much about yet, and I'd like to learn more about, which is what, what kind of curricular guidance we provide or what kind of expectations we set for teachers around anti-racism or around social justice. I actually don't know the answer to that question. And I'd like to learn more about it because it might be that we're doing great things. Or it could be that, that this is an incredible opportunity to take a big step forward on that front. I just don't know what our current state is.
Okay. Okay. So clearly, I think I hear support for us moving to a next step. And Mr. Morosky, I heard you say that you were gonna get an assignment, think all of these are relevant subjects or areas that we need to discuss and we'll, we'll move forward with it.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I have like two assignments. Yeah, thank you, President.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is about our board meeting schedule. So here's what's, here's what's, and that's, I put that on there. I think what, you know, we need to kinda revisit where we are in terms of scheduling our meetings. Earlier when we, this, when schools first closed, we made a decision as a board not to schedule a lot of, of our committee meetings, but to rather suspend them and only meet when it was high priority. Now, having said that, we've had SAC meet, we've had policy, both meetings were high priority meetings, so we needed to have those. We are now getting ready to have STEP, we're getting ready to have, I believe, an audit committee meeting. So I think that it, it, it looks like we're moving forward for having more of the committees meet. So I'm asking the board again, you know, do we need to recommit to that and only have these meetings scheduled when it's a high priority for the committee to meet? And I'm asking that because for every Blue G meeting that we have, it requires a great deal of coordination to get it all done in a timely way. That's one concern. The second concern is what we said in the beginning, we wanted to free up administrations so that they could do the work of working through this plan. And I'm not saying that in any way to say we have to or don't have to have a meeting, but it, it would, whatever the board says, we have to figure out a way of making sure that we have the technical capability of coordinating these meetings. And so just for your information, for every meeting, we have to have at least two people who are in the background moderating, which they make it all happen. And, and so like, like Jeremy, both Jeremy and I have been coordinating our full board meetings. So if we in fact have any meeting that's like subcommittees or special meetings, we have to then identify people who are gonna be behind the scenes to do it. I had a, I had a short conversation with the superintendent about meetings that don't fall under the board of responsibility, and she took care of that. But for all of the board work, I need to know from you guys, you know, are people planning on having committee meetings? If so, let me back up on that. My, what I wanna say is the, the chairs have the, have the, are charged with deciding whether the committee meeting is needed in terms of, is it a high priority? If that happens, if you deem that it is needed, then Phyllis is the point of contact to work with Krista Kramer on trying to get moderators. The problem is with all the meetings that are going on with the district, you know, it, it's hard, it's gonna be hard to try to coordinate that. So we have, I have asked, Pat will be serving in some role capacity as a moderator when it's needed. Both she and Phyllis are gonna be sort of trained in how to do the moderation piece. But Phyllis, if it's committee meetings, Phyllis has to be available to take minutes. One or the other has to be available to take minutes. So we still have to coordinate, have, making sure that somebody who more technical can help us in case we run into technical issues. So I hope I make sense and I'm open to any ideas or suggestions that you all have evaluated. And Ms. Bolton might see your hand.
Yes. And thus, the finance members wanna change this. Finance won't meet until we reopen. And, okay. And, uh, cause if the kids are coming, then by golly, obviously the grownups need to show up too. And I don't know if that's August or September. Even if it is that we open in August, I still would suggest we'd probably be too busy to be meeting in August, frankly. So right now, I would think that the two meetings that you would need to know about and board staff would need to know about is the audit committee, which is scheduled for the 24th of this month. And they've all, you know, we've already canceled one or two of those, so it's important that they meet. And then whatever will be the first finance meeting, I'm thinking it's probably would be in September.
Okay.
Everything else financially, we're at the point where it's a whole board decision.
Okay. Okay. So, okay, I hear that. Mr. Morosky?
So the policy committee, again, to echo Ms. Bolton, you know, pending Ms. Bowers and Mr. Messer's input, the policy committee will meet as needed as the district identifies policies that need amending, changing or drafting. So, you know, there are some of our, to use the parlance of our times, there are some essential services that we have to do in policy committee before the full board can vote on the policy. So that's kinda where we're at right now. We're not on a set schedule per se, but as we get policies, we'll meet.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bowers?
Yeah, I would agree. To be determined based on what's on the agenda or the task. Like right now, I think we have our second SAC meeting on Friday, just because there's some precedent things that actually need to, need to be discussed. But going forward after Friday is going to be kinda as needed. And it's really based a lot on determinations on school opening, priority, some of the tasks that go with, monthly tasks that are, that are on the schedule for SAC really is kinda secondary to what we need to do as far as a transitioning back to school. So it would be a TBD.
Yes, I get that. And, and health and, health and safety, they've not met. And, and I would think that it would be the same thing. I think this, Ms. Bolton said, which I think is what the full board agreed on, I mean, and I agree with that too, we're looking at, well, how do we slowly come back, you know, especially once school gets open? Because we still have to look at where's our physical space and, and get prepared for that. So I think we're all on the same page. I think what the question that, that I asked though is, it's not really a question, it's a statement, is that we, you know, I can work with the superintendent. No, let me back up. So for every committee meeting that comes up, I think each chair needs to realize that there are two moderators needed. And either Pat or Phyllis can assume one of the moderators' role, but then there has to be a second person as a backup. So typically, if, if in fact at committees, there is maybe, and I'm using this as an example, and Superintendent, you can chime in on this, if there's any leadership person who sits on that committee and might be willing and knows how to be the moderator, if they can moderate, that would be a possibility. Otherwise, I would be asking you to help provide somebody from our ITM who could do that. You know? So that's, that, that would be fine. And I certainly, I think we all understand that we have to continue to do business, although where it's a priority, but we really, I'm, I'm just, the, the behind the scenes piece gets pretty challenging. I have sometimes, you know, felt a little crazy because everybody knows I'm not a technical person, but we're doing our best to try to make sure that we meet everybody's needs. Does that make sense to folks? Yes, no? Okay. Mr. Morosky, you good with that? Ms. Bolton, Ms. Bates? Okay. All right. So are, if we're ready to move on, Ms. Bates, please present the following resolution for board consideration. Ms. Bates, are you there? Are you muted? Okay, I, I don't know. She may be having technical difficulties. Maybe Ms. Bo, Ms. Bowers, can you fill in for her?
Yes, I have before me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have before me a resolution to amend the board policy 0000, the bylaws. And it reads, whereas the city board of education has determined revision of the current board bylaws are in order to make them consistent with the current state laws and district procedures. And whereas board policy, board bylaws 0000 has been reviewed and updated by the Cincinnati Board of Education's ad hoc committee and the full board. Now therefore be it resolved that the city board of education approves board bylaws 0000 as written and be a further resolved that a copy of the Cincinnati Public Schools' board bylaws 0000 will be posted online and retained on file in the office of the board members, Cincinnati Public Schools Education Center. I present this resolution as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Lindby?
President Jones, thank you. I want to apologize if I, if I missed this in an attachment somewhere, but have we seen, is there a copy of the new policy?
The, yes. It actually is on your board docs. You get an email every, you get an email when we're preparing for the meetings from this broker that has the board documents on it. And if you click the link, it'll take you to board docs.
Yep. I thought I tried to do that, but I must have missed it here. Please carry on without me, I'll be back with you in a moment.
Okay. All right. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. I think it's great and I appreciate all the work everybody put into it, but I do have some, I don't know if it's corrections or suggestions or whatever, but something I think that's simple and might just be the wording where it talks about the oath of office. It's a, it's hard to say where it is because the numbers are weird, but it's 141, I mean 142 versus 152. It, the, the 142, I think expands who can deliver or administer the oath. And then I don't think we changed the language in the, the original, who can administer the oath. I'm totally in favor of the expansion, but we probably need to clean up the language that appears to be inconsistent or at least different.
So let me, are you saying, I just wanna be clear, are you saying it's, it's written in two different places?
It, yes, differently.
There's no consistency? Okay.
I believe so. Unless it was meant to only speak about oaths of officers, but it doesn't say that. So I think if we can clean that language up, the, the new version I think is better.
Okay.
And then the, another part, I've, I've given up on arguing about the finance committee should not be doing the lobbying. I just, Mrs. Bates's resistance is just too strong, I give up. And I'm sure the superintendent can work that out. So I, I can go with that, that addition for finance committee if that has to be. But I, I do think that there is just one or two more things that, the, the word standing was removed from standing committee, can't serve on more than one stand, it was standing committee, it's now, which is okay with me, that, and the standing committees are the three that we have, which are of course finance and SAC and health and safety.
We have four now. We have four.
Which is the fourth one.
Health and safety, student achievement, policy and finance.
Oh, yeah. You're right. So those are the four, the four standing committees, but they struck the word, and maybe, maybe Ms. Bowers can help me with it, struck the word standing, which would mean that a board member couldn't serve on like a, a chair, an ad hoc committee if they were chairing another committee or a special time limit. So I, I would just like to suggest that we put the standing committee, the word standing back in, does that make sense?
I would agree. Board Member Bolton, that was overlooked. So that makes sense.
Great. And, and then there's another word, but, but, which is, we, you know how we do that? And, and Mike mentioned it, we do the three-year review of the policies and we're so, we're very proud of that. But for, there's in 0171, there is a, a community relation that we're gonna review our community relations every three years. I, we, the word continuing is cut. I think that reality is we review our community relations more than, you know, three years apart. So I just would like to see that word returned. And the last thing promised is the, and this is no reflection on any president, especially you, Madam President, but there is a portion, there's a portion under the organizational chart or organizational chapter that talks about presidents and the superintendent and the treasurer being ex officio members. And it's clearly stated that, that, that they have, that the president has, ex officio, has the same powers and authority of the other commuter, the other committee members, but can't count towards the forum any more than the superintendent or treasurer can. But having said that, it's not been our practice to have the president be a voting member of the committees. And so I, I, but you have to specifically, if we're willing to do that, that's great. But the, but the idea there is we have to specifically say a non-voting, all other power.
Yes. And, and, and I, thank you. I, I appreciate that because we need to be clear about that in our policy. I also want to follow up to say, ex officio members do have all the rights and privileges to be at the table of discussion. They just don't get to vote and, and they're not part of the forum. So I agree with that and I think it should say that.
Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. Any, um, okay, so I have a, a point to make and, and a lot of, you know, some of this is really personal to me and I wasn't quite sure where to bring it up because there's nothing in the bylaws that relates to this. So I'm just gonna go ahead and say it. I think that, you know, we've had, certainly had conversation about the current climate of our, our country and where we stand. And I know that people have obviously some very personal concerns. And I think, you know, knowing all of you, this is personal to each of us in a different way. And so it's not written anywhere in the bylaws that this happens, but I am making a suggestion that because saying the pledge to the flag is not needed for us to do our business, that we remove the pledge to the flag as a part of our agenda. It is consistent with the board's, with the district's practice. We do not require our students to say it or schools to say it. And I think that should hold true for the board as well. So if, you know, and, and it's not written in here, I don't even know if it should be. I think what it is, is a matter of us agreeing or disagreeing about whether that should happen or not. Mr. Morosky, you had a comment?
You know how I feel about it. I haven't said the pledge in some time, so.
You know how I feel about it. I haven't said the pledge in some time, so adamantly supportive of you, President Jones.
Okay, other comments? Ms. Bolton?
I, I believe for, as in any public meeting, um, uh, the, I think it's reasonable to say the pledge. I think under certain circumstances, it makes sense to opt for a moment of silence instead. So, but I would, I, I don't want it in the protocol that we have to. But I am a believer that you say the pledge. It, it helps focus me as to what we're supposed to be about. Um, as does, you know, having a moment of silence or even prayer. I sat next to Chris Elms for how many years on the board? And before we could start a meeting, he would pray. And then he did not say the pledge, uh, and for, for very good reasons. But I, I wouldn't want to put in writing that we are not going to say the pledge. I don't want to put it in that we will. Uh, and I think there are times that, um, we should say it.
Okay, does, does anybody have any comments before I offer this piece of feedback? Ms. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, I have just, it's a personal preference for me. Um, it can be collective or it can be individual. Preferably, um, as with Mike, if, I think regarding the current climate, I've just elected that I'm not going to say it regardless of how the board decides or votes on this or decides on this being in the policy. I think it's just individual, um, decision.
Okay, um, anybody else have any comments before I make my final comment on that? Okay, I agree that it, it does not, I agree that it does not have to be written in the protocols. I just didn't know where this conference, where it was appropriate. I also think that having even a state, I think it was important for us at this particular time to take a stand and recognize what's going on, um, in our country. And we, we do the moment of silence, but I don't think we're even going to do the moment of silence forever. I think if we look at it as this was a business meeting and it even, it doesn't even, it's not, it's not even clear in the Ohio revised code that the pledge of allegiance is required. And so again, uh, it is personal, but it's even more personal for me because I have to lead it and I'm not going to do that. That's, that's how I feel. Now, if somebody wants to volunteer, I, because my goal, you know, as in self reflecting is that I'm going to take that moment to go in prayer. It is not, it is, and I, if, if people want to say the pledge, if somebody wants to lead it, that would be fine. But it, it, you know, um, at, at least until December 31st, somebody else, if, if you want to lead the pledge, that will be fine. So I don't know where we stand with that, but I'm just saying. And if folks don't want to make a decision about it today, that's fine. Okay, Mr. Lindy?
I just want to say I like your leadership on this issue here. President, I agree with you. Um, I'll share the, uh, two thoughts on this. Personally, I've always had kind of a weird relationship with the pledge because I'm Jewish. I used to leave out one phrase under God, not because I don't believe in God, but just because I think the way I think about that makes a difference from the way that people who wrote the Pledge of Allegiance thought about that. Um, so I, I, I think an inclusive moment of silence for me personally is something I really like. Um, the second thing is, the reason I like your approach, I think it acknowledges the moment we're in, in, in America, um, where, um, there feels like there is something incredibly important and, and right about protesting for a better version of this country. Um, and I think that if there's a way to do that in our context as leaders of our school system, I think that's courageous and great. Um, and I think that those moments will evolve over the next 50 and 100 years. Um, and like what, what, what the right thing to do is 50 years from now and 100 years from now will likely look different. Um, but I appreciate your leadership on this and I agree with you.
Okay, so let's, let's, uh, this is a consideration that we continue to do the moment of silence in lieu. I think the conversation is going to come up again. Um, um, but you know, I, I, we are where we are and, and it is a matter of personal choice. So, um, if, if the board's okay with that, we'll continue to do that and we'll move on. Is that, are we good? Okay. All right. So any other discussion around the resolution? Uh, I think what I heard, just to summarize, Ms. Bolton had several suggestions, Ms. Bowers. Um, if we pass the resolution, we will pass it with revisions that as noted. Okay? All right, thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Bates? Ms. Bolton?
Uh, aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
I found the document successfully and aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Motion, uh, motion carries. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. I have a very short one. And while someone is pulling up this PowerPoint presentation, um, my sources tell me that today is Mr. or Board Member Morosky's birthday. Happy birthday.
Superintendent?
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Yes.
I had, I had it on my list to do that. It's, no, it's okay. It's okay. But I also want to add that I think Ms. Bolton has a birthday too, like tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes.
Happy birthday. Yay.
That's just, that's, that's what happens when you have two geminis on the school board. So just be aware of that.
This, that explains, that explains the teaming committee busy the past couple of years.
Thanks, Superintendent.
Yes, I like to take a couple of moments to be able to highlight our students. And so again, we are still very much committed to putting our students first through our strategic plan in terms of student-centered decision-making. And we are very passionate, um, now more than ever about elevating the voice of our young people, especially in a light of what's happening across the country right now. And so again, student voice is critically important and that's always been highlighted by Board Member Morosky since he joined the board as well as other board members. And so we are listening and taking notes to elevate the voice of our young people. My very short presentation, uh, our, our three key messages are centered around student voice, student-centered decision-making and always elevating the importance of academic achievement. So you may be happy to know that, um, our graduating class of 2020 at this point, and all the figures are not in, but they have earned, um, over $68 million in college scholarships. Which is huge, yes. 68 million. So, uh, 70% of the students are going off to school, 21% will be employed and 9% are in the bucket of military or undecided or going to experience a gap year. So congratulations to our graduating, um, seniors. It is always so amazing to know how much money these kids earn and how truly smart our kids are. So congratulations to them. I also want to be able to highlight, speak up and speak out. And this speaks right to what Mr. or Board Member Morosky was talking about in, in terms of student voice. And so, um, you probably know that we've had two sessions with our young people last week and then again today. And I want to give a special shout out to Josh Harden and, um, Donna Murphy for organizing an opportunity for our young people to have their voices heard. And we had over 150 people tune in last week, um, to hear what our young people had to say. And we had another session today and it was really, um, a call to action today to say, okay, we are hearing what you're saying. What, what do you want? What are your demands of us? And two central themes really popped out of what our young people said. One is that they want the curriculum to reflect the diversity of our school district. And they also want to make sure that the curriculum highlights the achievements and accomplishments of, um, people of color and not just talk about, um, slavery. And so that came out loud and clear. The students said that over and over again. The other thing that they said, which is really interesting, is that they want, um, to have an opportunity to engage with the police in a meaningful and productive way. And they also believe that there's a lot of opportunity for the police to go through some enhanced training on how they work with the youth of today and people in general. They said loudly and clearly, we are different and we will not settle for some of the things that, um, our ancestors have settled for. And, um, but they are also looking for a positive and productive way forward with the police. They asked us questions about how they could actually receive training in school, how to interact with the police if you're stopped in a car. You know, many of our kids are, are driving now and so they, they asked about that. But it was really interesting. They weren't negative. They were very honest about their thoughts and they were looking for a way forward. So that was really encouraging. And then the last thing that I'd like to highlight is the fact that, you know, our central office opened up a couple of weeks ago and then it opened up to the public a week later. Our school offices opened up for the staff on June the 1st and our school offices will open up on June the 15th, um, to the public to be able to offer parents and community members the opportunity to come into our schools to take care of any business that they need to. So we encourage people to come in, enroll your kids, preschool, um, and kindergarten roundup. So we want everyone to come in. Uh, we do have a lot of safety precautions in place. So, um, Sarah Trimble Oliver has worked with her team to put a lot of precautions in place. I teasingly call her Dr. Acton because she is the person who lays down the law for us about what we can and can't do. And we're so fortunate and so happy to have Sarah serving in that role. And that concludes my presentation in addition to the written superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do board members have questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Bolton?
Just as a follow-up to, to the student piece and the curriculum piece, two things, I, I think the issue needs to be not necessarily the curriculum, but are our teachers teaching the curriculum? That's, that's an issue for me because I know what the curriculum says. Uh, and so that's a concern. The other thing that, on a number of different conversations over the last two, maybe three years, and they were not extensive and they happened because we happened to be in the same room and we had some concerns, um, Iris Rowley has at least twice or so suggested to me that it would be useful as we look at the, uh, agreement that folks came to after our civil issues, um, and if there's some way to work that in to some of the dialogue, maybe between the police, between, uh, the community and between, uh, a wider group, that there's some things within the, the agreement, uh, that, um, could be very useful, not just the thinking, but as, as prompts. And it might be interesting to reach out to her. And I did hear today that Cincinnati, Tampa and Chicago, the three, those three mayors and police chiefs have started a group uh, about this kind of dialogue and what have you and community policing. And I, I do also think we have a great history because I'm almost 70. Uh, and when I was in high school is when they first introduced resource, uh, officers. And I, I believe in them greatly, uh, when they're good, like any other folks. But there's a long history here in Cincinnati and CPS that we need to work through. And it might not be a bad idea maybe for the superintendent to reach out to Iris Rowley, uh, about talking about the agreement. And also the mayor kind of being very progressive and joining with the Chicago mayor and the Tampa mayor. There's an opportunity there for all of us to, to be leaders.
Great, that's a great suggestion. Okay, other questions or comments? Mr. Lindy, unmuted?
Um, thanks, President Jones. Uh, and this is just because I'm trying to learn more about how to follow great events like this. Um, we, could there have been an opportunity for me to, um, listen to the student conversation? Recorded anywhere or I'm, I'm worried I missed it. Um, I clearly already missed one document this evening. Um, and, uh, would, would like to get better at catching things.
Yes, so, um, it, it has been recorded and will appear on our website, uh, last week's conversations already on our website. Um, we were, um, a little reluctant, um, to broadcast it widely for adults. And the reason is, um, is that we wanted this to be a conversation for kids, by kids. And sometimes their responses are a little bit different if you have a whole bunch of adults. But, um, there were definitely adults who attended, but we do have it taped so that you can see it.
No, listen, I, I think that makes a ton of sense. Um, I, I wanted to make sure I hadn't missed something. Um, and if there is reporting, I'd love to listen to it. Um, and I think it sounds like a great, great thing. So thank you.
And, um, Superintendent, I, I just wanted to say that I was very impressed with, with the students and how they expressed themselves. And I know, you know, we talk about student voice. I don't want us to forget that the younger kids have a voice too. And if there's something that we can do to incorporate their voice, um, and I know it takes a specialty to know how to get them to, to, you know, uh, get involved in that kind of discussion. But I think that would be a great advantage to us and as well as to the students in that age group.
Thank you, President Jones, for noting that too. I would, I would concur.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? All right, do I have a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Bowers, thank you. Any discussion? Oh, we had discussion, didn't we? Okay. Ms. Wa, uh, Ms. Bolton?
Just a real question, uh, what are transition, uh, coordinators? Or what is it called?
Yeah, I believe those are coordinators who transition our students with disabilities. Help me out, Susan Buncey. Am I, am I on the right track with that or Paul?
Yes, Laura, you're on the right with that.
James, Paul, um, yes, you are exactly right. So they are folks who work, um, planning for post-secondary transition for our kids with disabilities.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, any other questions or comments, discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers? Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Um, do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
So moved. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Is, um, any discussion? I'm waiting. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Wow.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, any inquiries or updates? Ms. Bow, uh, Ms. Bolton followed by Ms. Bauer.
Yes, real quick updates, um, uh, there is a movement, uh, through OSBA and others, uh, that is called Vouchers Hurt Ohio. And, and I've personally been under a lot of, a lot of pressure uh, and communication from some of the leaders of that, uh, because they really are getting ready to file a lawsuit, if you will, regarding vouchers in the state of Ohio. And I think they're going to be filing on the 22nd. They wanted to see if Cincinnati would be supportive. I took the initiative and said, right now, we have to focus on this that we're doing, but please keep us informed and we're very interested in helping. But right now, we couldn't join a lawsuit. But I'm thinking that, that they will be coming back to us in July, uh, for that. And that might be something we can have a discussion about. But currently, I said, we wouldn't be ready by the 22nd. They called last week for the 18th time. Another thing is maybe Mike can help us with this or, or certainly Mr. Lindy, Ben perhaps. OSBA has asked us to submit some questions and topics for a town hall that they're having on equity. And if I could send this, uh, um, email out to everybody, if they didn't get it, uh, they need to kind of have some topics and some questions for this town hall, uh, by Monday. And so I thought there, some of us might want to do that. Uh, very quickly too, um, this is for, uh, I think this takes care of it. Yes, um, OSBA- sure we fill out the forms, whoever's going to do that, so that it can appear in the, um, in the catalog. That's it.
Okay. Um, Ms. Bowers, go ahead. Yes, I just, I have a inquiry and Superintendent Mitchell, this might be a question for Josh, uh, but I didn't know, are there any district-sponsored, like basketball camps going on, uh, where coaches are practicing outside, uh, and there was, as community members are concerned about, um, liability, if there are, uh, with practicing outside? And it might be a Josh's question.
Uh, I, I will look into that, to be honest with you. I don't know about that off the top of my head. Um, Ms. Murphy, do you know anything about basketball camps that are taking place outside right now?
So we opened to practice, uh, last Monday, um, after approval, but no, no formal camps. We are scheduled for phase two. Should you approve that? That would move inside. I believe that's June 22nd, but no formal basketball camps at this time.
So there, okay, so regarding liability or maybe some issues around kids getting hurt, nobody's like signed up? And even with inside the school building, are those district-sponsored things or is just allowing the use of, of that, even inside?
Yes, ma'am. We have not, um, allowed the use of that. PLT talked very extensively about building usage moving forward and in this season, and none of that has been approved at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I did want to follow up, uh, Ms. Bolton around the OSBA request. Uh, as you all know, I, I sit on that trustee board, so I get so much information for them, and I'm familiar with a lot of what Ms. Bolton is saying. Uh, I was intending to respond, uh, definitely to the, uh, submitting questions on the town hall piece. So if folks want to send me their things and I can just put it all in one, one, uh, stand, um, that would be great. Uh, so, and then the question that I have, Ms. Bolton, around the OSBA presentation, you said we, we're going to do something on equity, and who is we?
Uh, CPS, uh, the, the, um, the district is, and it's about, uh, how we developed and what is our equity policy, and other boards are very interested in developing it. So you were mentioned, I was mentioned, and so was Dan Hoynes.
Oh, okay.
Presentation, and it's, uh, it's a good time slot, uh, and it's that, you know, it's, it's that veterans' time. We're slotted for Monday at 10:30.
Okay.
And it's you and Dan and me.
Okay. I'll, I'll look at it. I hadn't seen it, so thank you.
But we just have to fill out the form if, that would be great.
Okay. Um, okay, any, okay, any other inquiries and updates? Grade assignments? Assignments? Mr. Morosky, I know you have one or two. Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, President Jones. So assignment number one would be to General Counsel, to, and myself, to investigate, uh, sort of anti-racist policies, um, that already exist, if there are any. Um, I don't know of that. Um, it may exist, um, so that at our next policy committee meeting, whenever that may be, pending what policies the superintendent says we need, because that's Ms. Bolton's point, that's kind of where we're at, we're in that mode. But, uh, CPS can walk, chew gum, ride a bicycle, eat a carrot, read a book at the same time. So, yeah. At our next policy committee meeting, then if Mr. Hoynes could bring either a draft, which would be the greatest, or at least, uh, something to discuss, and, and I certainly will as well, that's policy number one. And then policy number, or sorry, geez, assignment number two is, um, to myself, uh, to send the superintendent a list of different recommendations that include things as extreme as not having CPD to things like HR hiring practices, do we give the Harvard implicit bias test, to curricular ideas, all kinds of things, total spitball stuff. I just wanted to say for my colleagues in the public certification that it's not some secret document. These are the, the suggestions on there, and of course, anti-racist training for all staff and teachers. Um, so assignment to me, to send that to superintendent, and then, um, I know how busy you are, Superintendent Mitchell, but if you could like, it's short document, kid come around, see what PLT maybe thinks, and if it might, none of them might stick or they may. So just to keep that communication going, and then maybe we can talk about it at a board meeting in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any other assignments? Thank you. Okay. Um, I need a motion now to recess into executive session after a five-minute break for the purpose of discussing, uh, considering, um...
You got pizza crumbs on you, buddy?
Um, preparations for conducting or reviewing negotiations, bargaining, uh, security matters, purchase of property, matters required to be kept confidential, and appointment of a public official or employee. I need a motion.
So moved.
I make the...
Second?
Second.
I need, okay. Uh, is there a roll call, Ms. Wagner? Or, okay, roll call, Ms. Wagner?
Um, is Ms. Bates rejoined us by any chance?
I think she's gone.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. So thank you to our public for joining us, all 379, and, uh, uh, we'll see more back in five minutes. Thank you.